Hi, good evening. I'm calling the Boxborough Planning Board meeting to order at 7:00 PM on December 1st, 2025. This meeting is being conducted by Zoom as usual, and you can access that through our agenda, or you can, there's a meeting link there, and then there's also a simple call and number as always too if you're not using a computer. So first I'll start off by taking roll call. Folks, as I see you, Mark White.
Wait, present.
Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi, present.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, present.
Cindy Markwitz.
Markwitz, present.
And Werner, present. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any public comment that is about items that is not listed currently on the agenda. If you have a comment or a question for the board, please raise your hand and I'll call on you, or you can also press star line on your phones. Abby, I'm seeing you. If you could say your name and address, please.
Hi, Abby Reed, 205 Old Harvard Road, and I wanted to make a comment about zoning along Mass Ave. I hope that the planning board will consider working on an updated zoning bylaw that would encompass Massachusetts Avenue Business District and into Town Center. In light of the approval, the site plan approval that you just did for 975 Mass Ave, I know there was a lot of discussion about the appearance of the building and the types of businesses that will be using that space, and the types of business that it conflicts with the types of businesses that the people of Boxborough really desire. So I would hope that you would kind of start to get to work on that. And as part of that zoning bylaw update, it would be great to include the Design Review Board as having a greater authority with regard to what the buildings look like along Mass Ave. That is our main street, and I really feel like there's something that we should be doing about it to make it look better and make it serve the interests of Boxborough residents more. Thank you.
Thanks, Abby. I appreciate it. Any other public comment at this time? Okay. All right, so moving on to our next topic. We have 7:05, it's just 7:05, a master plan annual update. And the Planning Board and the Select Board is here for a combined meeting together to discuss the Boxborough 2030 Master Plan Annual Progress Report. So with that, Kristen, I think you probably need to call your board to order. If you'd like to go ahead and do so at this point, go ahead. Kristen.
Yeah, I had to wait to be allowed to unmute. Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the Boxborough Select Board meeting to order at 7:05 PM on December 1st, and we'll do a roll call vote using the faces I can see. Bob Stempel, are you here?
Stempel, aye, is here.
Sam Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
And Hilber Guy. Priya's unable to join us. She's at work, and I don't see Wes.
Wes is here.
Oh, there's Wes. And Wes?
President.
Thank you. Okay, off we go.
Perfect, thank you. Alec, I'm going to turn this over to you to make your presentation.
Great, thank you, everybody. So we do have a pretty packed agenda, so I have endeavored to make this year's presentation nice and short. Each year we get a little bit, a little bit shorter on the overall presentation, so just bear with me. I'm going to get this up, and then we can get started. All right, so while it is still 2025, this is the Annual Progress Report of 2026. It's always a retrospective. We look backwards on a year full of success, full of great things that we accomplished, and reflect back on the things that we can continue to do to improve our planning functions here in Boxborough. For those of you watching at home, my name is Alexander Alec Wade. I'm the town planner here in Boxborough. I also work to oversee the office of land use and permitting, but it is the function of a town planner predominantly in almost any town to help facilitate the implementation of a master plan. That's what the Boxborough 2030 Plan is, and as you can see from the tagline here, "In 2015, we set out to become a rural and engaged community for all." Those are really strong words that have resonated with me since I joined the team here in Boxborough, but clearly resonate with the people of Boxborough even more. So a quick rundown of how this is going to go. Every year we give this presentation, this board, both boards are probably sick of seeing this slide, but we have to look at it each time. We're going to do a presentation by myself that's going to last about 15 minutes. We'll do Q and A with the two boards, and then you, the public, will have the opportunity to participate via a public comment period. That runs starting December 2nd, which is tomorrow, all the way through the 31st. If you want to get something in on January 1st, you're welcome to. I won't be checking my email, but I'll catch up on it on the second when I get back into the office. I will ask that both boards hold their questions through the Q and A period. That'll just let us get through the initial presentation part pretty quickly. And I will note that both boards have received the written progress report in advance of this meeting. So you, the public, will have the opportunity to view this and read it in full online starting tomorrow. The boards have had time to look at it ahead of time, and so they know the majority of the substance, as well as the lengthy words that go with the many slides here. But we're going to dive right into this presentation. So what is a master plan? A master plan is the comprehensive roadmap that every community sets forth to become what it wishes to be. I always say that it's the job of the Planning Board, the Select Board, the many volunteer boards. It's your job to tell us what you want your community to become. It's not the job of the people who apply for different projects or different applications. It's your job through a comprehensive master plan, then your zoning bylaws and your general bylaws, to establish what you want the community to be. This ranges from infrastructure to planning and legislative matters, as well as your overall philosophical. So for example, Boxborough has committed to being a rural and engaged community. That means maintaining the rural character that we always talk about, while continuing to promote a community that's engaging for a diverse range of populations. The way that Boxborough's master plan is structured is through sets of aspirational goals and then tangible action items as a trickle down by which you can implement and make steps towards those larger aspirational goals. A total of 125 action items were developed in 2015. That was the last time the town did an update. In 2002, you published your actual master plan. In 2015, you did an update. Mark White worked hard this year to help actually unearth the original 2002 master plan, which is available on the website if anyone wants to download and read. But those 125 action items are tangible things that we as professionals, as well as you, the volunteer boards and committees, can actually undertake to become the community that you envisioned. The process we're setting forth tonight, this is our annual update and progress report. So I want to outline that. That doesn't mean we've updated the plan. This plan, as you can probably guess from the title, lasts until 2030. It's a 15-year update plan. What we're doing is an annual progress report, so I kind of shake out what that looks like here. On the left-hand side, you can see our annual updates. That's the process by which you, the boards and committees, as well as the many other boards and committees of Boxborough, provide us your input, your analysis. We develop a simple tool by which you give us your progress. You tell us what's working, what's not working, what action items have stalled or otherwise been able to move forward. And then we in the planning office take all that data, that very qualitative data, we convert it into a quantitative format, which turns into the pretty-looking graphs and the numbers that you see tonight, and we provide back a comprehensive analysis and recommendations. The goal of this annual progress report is both to take a temperature of the room, see where we're at, what's working, what isn't, as well as to help advance other projects. As you'll see tonight, we had a 4% increase from the actions that are being acted upon or otherwise completed, as we did from last year. So tangibly, we're making progress year over year. At that rate, we could maybe get to 100%, but as you'll hear me say, no master plan is ever 100% in act. That's just not practical. But through this progress report process, this joint meeting that we do once a year, which is set forth in your plan as the actual method for annual updates, we take really good steps. We make sure the process is moving forward. And tonight, we'll actually set forth to start planning our next master plan, or our long-range comprehensive plan, as you're going to hear me start to call it. So before we talk about the future, let's talk about where we are today. So after doing this progress report, after seeking feedback on all 125 items, we're able to break down the report and the overall progress into these four categories: complete, in-progress, delayed, or no update. No update is assigned exclusively when there was no update provided. Perhaps a board provided an update, but they have chosen not to report on a specific action item. Delayed is usually means that they've provided us feedback, and they've told us why the project hasn't moved forward or why they're having trouble moving it forward. Complete reflects an action that was a one-time or a short-term project, something that could tangibly be completed, versus in-progress, which make up the majority of our action items. So an in-progress action item is a positive thing in this case. When you look at these four categories, you can break them down to two key categories here: either are not engaged or are engaged actions. A master plan, like yours, often includes goals that will never be fully completed. That's because they're things that are done every year, you know, continuing to maintain properties in a certain way, continuing to seek out and evaluate new parcels for conservation or recreation purposes. Those are things we're going to do every year. You're never going to stop doing that, because if you stop doing it, then you'll stop taking progress towards recreation and conservation. We're not going to do that here in Boxborough, so those are just to give you a couple examples. When you really boil it down, 86% of your plan has been engaged. That's a huge number. It's fantastic to see. It's fantastic to be a part of, and it just goes to show the work that this community puts forward. Not just the professionals in office, which make up actually a pretty small percentage of the action items for outright responsibility, but the work that so many boards and committees are doing, oftentimes with the help of associated staff. As I said earlier, we made progress by 4% this year. Last year, we had 18% of our action items were not engaged. This year, that's down to 14, and similarly, we're up to 86% engagement of your master plan. If we continue at this rate, by the time we wrap this up, we'll be at 102%. I don't know if we can actually achieve that, but we're going to keep trying as best we can. The success we saw, those 4% we grew, I want to kind of highlight where a lot of that comes from. That's not to say that the boards, committees, and staff we're talking about here are the only ones that did work, but these are the ones we're really highlighting for the success they had. We're going to highlight three in particular. 2025, the Economic Development Committee took huge strides in implementing its grant program. So you remember, it initiated a grant program in 2024. 2025, they then worked with the various applicants of the grant program, and they ended up creating 12 new jobs in the community, as well as opening a new business and stabilizing multiple other businesses here in Boxborough. Similarly, the Sustainability Committee continued to build off their success. They actually ticked off their finer, the final master plan action item this year. That was specifically preparing a climate action plan, which is scheduled to be brought before the Select Board for adoption in January of this upcoming year. That's a really exciting step forward. It's a really comprehensive and progressive step for the town, not only saying that we're going to be a green community, which was previously achieved, but now we're going to take steps at a policy level to make sure that the people of Boxborough, the business of Boxborough, are taking equal strides to be energy efficient and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. They also opened this beautiful swap shed that you can see here. It's a fixture at the transfer station today, and it's a real community resource. A lot of it done was by, a lot of it was done by volunteer efforts, as well as Ian, our associate town planner, who's been assisting them throughout the way. But they are our highest achiever this year, where they have achieved all of their master plan action items. And now we're looking for new work for them to do. And then I always like to give a quick plug for the work being done by different staff, departments, and teams. This year, we're giving a quick plug to the Sergeant Memorial Library. Specifically, they play host to Diwali Fest, and this year they had upwards of, I believe, 1,700 people participating. They have made significant strides to making Boxborough a very inclusive community, but also really being an anchor in the community. When we think about the municipal spaces of Boxborough, the library is probably the most beloved by so many. It's a space that they are actively working to improve. They're doing a redesign of the interior space, not through construction, but layout adjustments and working to make the space more conducive to libraries in 2026. And overall, just continuing to make it a very welcoming space for a lot of people to use. This photo was snapped the day of, and you can see the whole library lawn is just absolutely packed. Really great work by Peishan and the team. So our actions going into 2026, our recommended actions. When we're making recommendations, we look for specific projects that can be undertaken, things that can be done that achieve multiple actions within the plan, some that have been not started, others that are in progress already. Some of these are holdovers from the previous years. So for example, our very first recommendation is prepare a housing production plan. This was a recommendation last year, and over the past year, we've continued to see the need for a housing production plan in Boxborough. Specifically, as we were going through our MBTA communities' compliance work, it was stated by many boards multiple times that having a housing production plan would have assisted in the process. The Housing Board has worked with our associate town planner to begin scoping a housing production plan. And actually, tomorrow night, I will be attending the Housing Board meeting to work out exactly how we finance and move that project forward. But we expect by this time next year, we will have either received the grant funding necessary to complete the work, or we'll have gotten a head start using housing trust funds. But the Housing Board will discuss those details tomorrow night if you want to tune in. In 2025, we were successful in grant funding in its entirety and economic development plans. So we used $15,000 of regional money, as well as $60,000 of state funds. At no cost to the Boxborough taxpayers, we'll be able to complete this economic development plan in 2026. We're working out the grant contracts now, and we'll be able to kick off this work beginning in February. This will be a very exciting project that scopes out the emerging sectors, the areas for us to target and to work with as the boards consider potential use code changes and as the Plan Board looks at its zoning moving forward. All right, so next item, preparation of a greenhouse gas inventory. As you'll hear in the Climate Action Plan coming before the Select Board next month, this is a really important part. This is a key component to any climate action plan, but it takes stock of what your ambitions are and how we can affect them. And then additionally, we are also seeking funding this upcoming year for revision to the town design guidelines. We just heard a member of the public talk about the role they can play in shaping the physical infrastructure of Boxborough and how we want it to look. And we intend to take action through pairing them with a consultant or potentially our regional planning agency. And finally, I am recommending that the town of Boxborough convene what I'm calling a local historic preservation summit. So this has been a kind of odd theme that's been emerging. If you look at the actual data itself, you'll see that our Historic Commission has already done a lot of work, and there are certain action items that have been fairly stalled. But other boards and committees have seen an emergence of need to reconvene this conversation and have a more robust discussion, whether that's about historic district commissions, demolition delay, or other steps that can be done to preserve more historic spaces. But all of that requires a deep amount of public input. So my expectation is that in the coming year, we will convene a lot of these stakeholders from the Design Review Board, the Historic Commission, the Steel Farm Advisory Committee, likely the Planning Board and Select Board as well, to take stock of where we stand as a historic community today. Notably, there are a few historic properties that are coming on the market in the coming years. And without an action plan, an intent of what to do, it's hard for us to make steps to actually preserve those if that's what the community wants to do. So in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Q and A, but I do want to map out what the next five years look like. As I said, this is the Boxborough 2030 Master Plan, and we are looking ahead to what the next long-range comprehensive plan will be. The last two updates I've given, we've shown a simple graphic that kind of maps this out, but the work starts this year as we get into 2026. We're still five years out, but a long-range comprehensive plan takes about a year and a half to actually write, which means you need a long time to plan it. You need to be able to map your stuff out. You need to be able to fund the project, all to get to a January 1st, 2030 turn-on date. My expectation is that between the Select Board and the Planning Board, we will have adopted this master plan prior to January 1st, 2030, effective on that date. So the work will have already been done, and we'll transition right from one master plan to the next long-range plan. In 2026, I'm specifically seeking for the Select Board and the Planning Board, the Planning Board being the authority of a master plan. I'm seeking for you to work with me to specifically put together our initial stakeholder group, whether that's a long-range comprehensive planning committee, a subcommittee of one of the two boards, or an advisory group of some form, in which we can begin mapping out the chapters and the methods in which we want to conduct our next long-range comprehensive plan. There's a lot of work that goes into that. I won't bore you with it tonight, but this is the first step in a five-year process to get to our next long-range plan. All right, Q and A. That's record time for me. Everyone knows I'm very long-winded. Let me answer your questions. What do you have?
Anyone? Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, it's maybe less of a question, Alec. Thank you for putting this together and boiling it down to those kind of critical things. And I appreciate your approach to, okay, we need time to start preparing for the next master plan. My concern is always that we, we're, you know, we think about the past, we're focused on the future, and today's right in front of us, and we're, you know, so we're not getting it done, right? But if I look at those things that you summarized, and you can kind of wind back a couple slides, those are all really important pieces to the master, to go back to the things you summarized. The housing production plan, the economic development plan, the design review guidelines, the historic preservation. Those are like fundamental tenets of Boxborough 2030 that like still have a lot of work to be done, and they, we made progress, right? We got funding on a couple of these. We've identified the need to go get some funding on others. But I just don't, I just want to be careful that we're focused, you know. These are critical to close out 2030, right? And if you were to come and say, okay, what chapters do you want to talk about for the next master plan? It's going to be these, right? So I think this is great work, like we're making progress, but like these are really important to kind of close on over the next two years.
Yeah, wholeheartedly agree. It's very important that as we look forward, we continue to work on our previous plan. A really actionable, long-range plan like this, even when we're in 2028 launching our new product, our new process, we will still be doing work. It isn't until 2029 that we'll really slow down on the existing plan. In this phase, the 2026 strategizing phase, this is probably about three meetings in total of either a long-range comprehensive planning committee or an advisory group. They'll be spaced out by quarter, but effectively, meeting one, we come together. We kind of make our plan, our mission statement of what we want to achieve in 2026. Our second meeting, we actually start to think about what those chapters are that are important. And then in the third meeting, the final meeting before this annual report in 2026, we then actually map out the public engagement strategy so that we can bring them back. So by no means a heavy lift, but important work that we have to start early, both to build awareness as well as to actually make the path possible.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I think I made this comment in Planning Board meetings, but we have a number of planning documents that have been prepared over the last few years. And, you know, this is more of a prospective recommendation, but I would also like to see it addressed here somehow, a way to sort of incorporate all the work that's been done, all the recommendations out of those plans, so that we don't lose that, you know, those, that work and those recommendations as we move forward. It's almost, you know, an iterative process to try and continue on the plans that we've been working on. So I guess sort of a, just a thought for going forward about this progress update, perhaps to include all the other sub-plans, and then a suggestion for, you know, the future is how do we incorporate those, sort of make them more living documents across the board? So I just, I don't have an answer to that, but it's something I've been thinking about and would like to see us make better use of the work that's already gone into all of those subprograms to get here.
That's really great feedback. Yeah, really great feedback, Cindy. You're picking up on something that several communities have actually done in which their master plan is actually a conglomeration of other planning documents. So for example, some towns don't do an economic development plan. They do a robust economic development chapter of their master plan, and so that's really great feedback. This can be a really great tool to memorialize and actually emphasize the goals of things like the Trails Master Plan that was done so many years ago. But you also are correct, we can't put those in the, we can't put those in the rig, in the mirror. So next year, let's see what we can do to kind of reemphasize and realign, or at least highlight where those other, those other plans and other objectives align with the work of the master plan too. Great feedback.
Perfect. Any other questions? Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Quick, Alec, if one of the items that is, we can't get to, we haven't got to, can we roll it over beyond 2030 into the next plan?
Yes, without a doubt. I'm sure, especially some of our items that, some of our items will be automatic rollover. So for example, we have continual renewable housing production plan, continual renewal of the open space and recreation plan. If those aren't incorporated into the master plan itself, there'll be action items that are rolled straight into it. So very common that communities roll action items one plan to the next.
And do you get, I guess my question is, not that you get ding, but do you get dinged? If, you know, for one, that, for one, that you just haven't accomplished?
No, not at all. Some of the, some of the brightest planning philosophers have said, any planning process, whether it's infrastructure-related or a document like this, it's about flexibility. What you envisioned 15 years ago might not be practical. I mean, 15 years ago, we weren't talking enough about what a global pandemic would look like. And then smack dab in the middle of the plan, we got hit by one, and it's totally changed the way that we are rural, but still engaged. We're a very engaged community now in new ways than ever before. So entirely normal that items are left on the cutting room floor, and some items that we never envisioned end up getting implemented.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Alec, very much for pulling that all together for us this evening. Shall we move on to the Climate Action Plan reporting from Ian?
I believe so. This is not on the joint meeting agenda of the Select Board. So Kristen, if you want to go ahead and adjourn your meeting, for those of you who want, you can sign off and enjoy the rest of your night.
I would like to say welcome, Ian, like, thank you for joining us, and it's the first time that I've actually met you, and I plan to stop in at Town Hall when it's not a snowstorm this week, or whatever, but I will stop by and say hi, so welcome.
Thank you very much, Wes. Yeah, it's great, it's great finally meeting you, even if it's not in person. But just know that my door is always open, and I'd love to sit down and chat anytime. Maybe not tomorrow, but we'll see.
I'll say my friends on the Conservation Commission have wonderful things to say about Ian. He's doing great work.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, Ian, your head just got big. You can let it go now.
I'm here to tear you down.
Hey, someone's got to get out of here.
All right, so before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I am planning on hanging on and listening in on the campanelli. Will there be a quorum of the Select Board, or are at least two of you logging off?
I don't mind watching on the Boxborough TV, so I will be out.
Awesome. How about Bob and Sam?
Likewise.
Okay, perfect. Then I want you to take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, one of you has to move.
No, so moved. It's so moved.
I'm like, wow, we're so bad at this. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Bob?
Stempel, aye.
Sam?
Anderson, aye.
Wes?
Folks, aye.
And Hilber Guy. All right, thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Wes.
Alec, Ian, good luck. You got a fun crowd. But I will say that this is my second favorite update. Last year was my favorite. So good job, guys, and keep up the good work.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, so thank you. I'll get moving. I'm looking at the time here, and I'll start my timer, 7:31. I should be able to do this in perfect Alec time. So yes, my name is Ian Gilson. For those of you who have not met me yet, I am the Associate Town Planner. Couple days ago, actually, just became my six-month mark, so I'm very happy to be with Boxborough. It's been a really great time so far, a very welcoming community. And this has been a great project that I've been working on for a couple months here now. Kind of was one of the first ones I picked up and worked on it a little bit over the summer, and definitely a lot more this fall. I do have a background in environmental science, so this isn't completely out of my wheelhouse. One of my previous jobs actually saw me going through dozens and dozens of university climate action plans. So yeah, thank you very much for your time. It's been a long time coming that I've been working on this. Looking forward to what the Planning Board has to offer to this. As we get through this, you'll see that there's a lot of tangible steps and kind of a lot more. There's a lot that the Planning Board can do for this plan, and I'm excited to get your feedback and comments on it. So first, for a little context, credit where it's due. Boxborough Climate Action Plan is not a new project. It's been in development for about a year now. Our Sustainability Committee Chair, Kate Davies, got a group of Tufts Urban Environmental Policy Master students to begin this work last winter. And it's been changing and and coming in many forms and receiving feedback over the past year to shape and inform what it is today and eventually what its final form will be before its adoption. So what is the Climate Action Plan? What is the Climate Action Priority Plan? It's important to distinguish these two. First off, I'll plug this little QR code. If you did want to open it up on your phone, it's a really great document, a super guiding document that's been really integral to this project. So I want to start with, this is a this is a very big deal. Boxborough has no formal document that guides their sustainability efforts as of yet, and this is exactly what this plan will serve as. Alec was mentioning the the goals and the purpose of a master plan, and this is just like that. It will be for the town to use to guide their next years of development in a sustainable manner, as well as improve education across the sustainability education across the community, as well as identify areas for improvement and increase sustainability. So let's get into this. I said a lot of the groundwork has already been laid out with the Climate Action Priority Plan seen here on the left. It did a lot of preliminary research and technical analysis into Boxborough's demographics and and the concerns regarding climate change within the community that would go on to identify these five focus areas and 10 priority strategies and recommendations that are really at the core of Boxborough's Climate Action Plan. So what this is in the process of becoming Boxborough's final Climate Action Plan will be an expansion of the work that's laid out in the priority plan and include clear deliverables on the implementation strategies, as well as identify stakeholders and partners for their execution and incorporate feedback received this summer and fall, and of course, tonight from the planning board. The Climate Action Plan will be deeply informed by the town to ensure everybody is on board with how this will be implemented following its final adoption. So I should add that the Climate Action Plan, it won't include emissions data. Some climate action plans, it's common for climate action plans to do so. But where we are in the stage right now, it won't, and it will in the future. It's one of our very first goals. So it will be light on emissions data. You can see that, but we hope to have this done as early as possible so that our first update to the Climate Action Plan can build upon our goals with data and emission reduction figures as well as targets. So I'm gonna go on kind of a timeline here of how this feedback came in, starting here. The Climate Action Priority Plan Survey. Don't want to spend too much time on this. I know it's a lot of words and numbers on the screen, but I do think it's important to review. Again, I put the QR code here. If you do want to go into the data analysis section of the priority plan, it starts on page 49. And this was a really robust outreach survey that identified a lot of the concerns that Boxborough residents had. But at a high level, we see a lot of concern regarding extreme weather, flooding and heat and water scarcity, as well as residents concerned about their water quality and health. Residents also want to see financial incentives for sustainability brought into Boxborough. And a key theme that was first brought up in this that we see throughout this feedback is that Boxborough has a strong desire for more education on this topic, on sustainability and Climate Action Plan is great, but pointing residents to these educational resources and actions to further reduce their carbon footprint and improve sustainability is definitely at the forefront of many minds in town. And then lastly, I'll just say, there's definitely a lot of thought and priority towards transportation, or I should say, low emission transportation and mobility options seemingly around the town center area, but you know, anybody driving around town, you can tell that there's definitely more need for sidewalks all over the town. So as I said, that survey that we were just kind of digging into informed five focus areas and 10 priority action strategies. All equally important and a lot of them much easier to achieve than others. The priority plan identifies timelines, loose timelines for these methods of implementation, but the Climate Action Plan in its final form will build on these using the feedback that we receive. And yeah, we'll come back to this circle very shortly to talk about those timelines. So one of the first items of outreach that were done was this summer, the Sustainability Committee and town staff were present at Pfeiffer's Day to engage dozens of residents on their interest, knowledge and support on the Climate Action Plan. You can see this is the visioning poster that we did. Essentially, residents would come up. The Sustainability Committee members, as well as the Sustainability Intern would engage them, discuss with them their concerns and priorities regarding climate change and then pointing them to this this circle that identifies the focus areas and strategies and asking them about which were the most important to them. As you can see, water, waste and resilience will see are constant priorities for residents of Boxborough, as well as the education and use of incentives over regulation is another theme that we see throughout this outreach. Whereas this says expand zero emission mobility, it has since been changed in the in the priority plan. It seems a bit EV related and a bit framed towards zero emission vehicles, EV vehicles. But you also see at the first part up right here, there is desire for sustainable transportation, which is definitely much more open ended for transit options, including walkability and mobility in the town center district, as we mentioned. Lastly, we also saw that energy in buildings recognize that a high priority. But with no existing greenhouse gas inventory, it's a bit hard to make measurable goals for those. So that's why we will see the greenhouse gas inventory as an early, a short, short term goal. So later in the summer, or during the summer, actually, Sarah Martel was hired as Boxborough's first Sustainability Intern to collect feedback on the priority plan to then inform the the development of the Climate Action Plan from the town's boards, committees and local regional partners. And although I'll say limited feedback was received, we got about, we heard back from about eight committees, but about three of those did not believe that the the Climate Action Plan was relevant or addressed their mission just because they were very, very separate or very distinct goal oriented committees that might not meet that often. So we did get five pretty robust responses from some of the boards and committees in town. So and these were the key takeaways that we were able to get on that, that across the board, again, we saw a lot of agreement on these five pillars. The boards and committees also a couple of times identified that they have these existing plans that guide Boxborough's development that aim to address some of these goals, and they want to see that the final form of the Climate Action Plan addresses and build on these existing goals, which we'll also get to in the very next slide. A lot of them recognize that there was limited staffing and funding needs to implement the goals put forth in the Climate Action Plan, as well as significant support for interdepartmental and intercommittee coordination and goal setting, as well as the boards and committees just wanted to know how they could help and support the final implementation of this, which is, like I said, one of the key distinctions between the priority plan and the Climate Action Plan is that in its final form, it will identify stakeholders and partners that will be integral in implementing the strategies put forth. So speaking of those overlapping goals, earlier this summer, actually, I was a new employee working to familiarize myself with these guiding documents of Boxborough, these goal setting documents, like the Open Space Rec Plan, Water Resources Report that came out more recently. And these other plans here, especially on the right column here, the 2030 Master Plan. And one of the exercises I did was cross referencing the the five pillars of the Climate Action Priority Plan with the goals put forth in each of these plans. So I'm not really trying to reinvent the wheel here. I do think that cross departmental and committee collaboration is integral for a strong Climate Action Plan and implementation of the of the Climate Action Plan. So I did prepare this in order to identify where the most where the highest levels of overlap are. So the dark green you can see are very strong overlap between like the Water Resources Report and the implementation strategies of the priority plan, as well as Energy Reduction Plan and our strategies for energy reduction put forth in the Climate Action Plan. So these are documents that I have been using to inform myself on what Boxborough's current goals are, but also the Sustainability Committee and the Planning Department are using to move forward and see, okay, we already have this plan. How can we think bigger and and continue building off of these goals that have already been put forth? So back to the circle, I just want to briefly go over the the timelines that we have here. The Climate Action Priority Plan identified some timelines, short term, medium term and long term. And as you can see, the greenhouse gas inventory, as we already mentioned, is short term, as well as the education of private well water, reduce solid waste emissions that is starting in January. More education efforts is an ongoing effort that can start as soon as this plan is published, as well as community research, and then increase institutional capacity, since that is a very long spanning goal, it's better to start that as soon as possible. Medium term, you can see some of these, the greenhouse gas inventory may not be done within the first year. Yeah, I don't think I need to get into many of these. We'll get into a lot more in the next slide, which is a bit dense, so I want to spend a good amount of time on it. So this is ultimately kind of where I was going with this presentation. I wanted to do a deep dive on these 10 strategies that we looked at, talk about possibilities for the planning board to to assist in the implementation and the development of the Climate Action Plan. So we have our 10 strategies listed here off to the left. You have pros and cons or challenges, their cost level, key benefits, and then the opportunity for the planning board. Noting that it's 7:45 now, I will leave this up on the screen since the next slide is for questions and comments, but I will go through some of them. So obviously, a work in progress. This is going to continue developing. And I'm looking for your feedback on some of these tonight, what you guys think, where you think we can go with these. There's a lot of areas that the planning board can assist with, and some are a lot more straightforward and concrete than others. I'll try to stay just to the right here. So looking at outreach, education and water resource information, as well as waste management, were all identified as top priority throughout the many outreach processes that we've done. So I I'd implore you to begin thinking about that and and look at what we have here on the right. And moreover, I think through developing these that the most tangible and concrete items for delivery for the planning board to commit to are with zero emission mobility here. We've already heard in one of the comments we had earlier tonight that there was a desire for town center zoning, increased improved town center zoning, especially off the heels of a very successful Village for a Day event. Also, as Alec was talking about, we're in our next master plan is only a short, a few short ways away. We're also in the beginning. We're in the process of developing a housing production and economic development plan. The planning board will also be very helpful to work with in creating the on the ground changes that increase sustainability in the town, be that through new zoning or bylaws. And lastly, I just want to put on your radar the reduced solid waste emissions and adopt specialized stretch code are currently being worked on by the Sustainability Committee. This January, we're going to see the first meeting of the New and Improved Waste Reduction Working Group, who will be working to identify ways to reduce waste within town, but also implement pay as you throw program, identify the pricing schemes that would make that an affordable option for Boxborough to implement. And then the Specialized Stretch Code is currently on a timeline to be adopted either next spring or next fall. And we're planning on using the the energy reduction data that we gain from our Green Communities Project to inform and and educate residents on why a specialized stretch code would be beneficial to the town of Boxborough. Yeah, I'll stay here. Oh, sorry, timeline forward. I lied. We are right here. We're in the final draft of the draft. Sorry, draft, final draft. We're in the final stages of drafting the Climate Action Plan, and it is going to the Sustainability next week for its first view, and then it will sit with them, as well as you guys and all the other boards for revision period going to January before adoption by the select board. Now it's comments and concerns, and I will go back to this in case you guys wanted to go to it. So I did not beat Alec on the time here, but yeah, thank you guys very much. Very happy to hear what you guys have to say. Let me grab a pen so I can start taking notes.
You did fine, Ian. This is really, really exciting. I'm super, super stoked to to see all of this information pulled together in one place. I'm hoping that you'll circulate this to everyone after this meeting, because there's a ton of gossip information that that I'd love to just dig into with more detail. So thank you for pulling this together. Board members, questions, comments for Ian at the time? Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, I'll ask the question. I may have asked this not for this presentation. Thank you, Ian. This is really comprehensive, and you've done a nice job of laying this out. When we move forward with this priority strategy, action strategy, deep, well, this is this slide is your deep dive. We're going to adopt a plan. Do these specific things become go do actions? Or like, because for each one, right, there's there's a value, like there's the pros, the challenges, right? There's a there's a plus and a minus to everything, right? And so the we have to go through each one and come to a conclusion. Okay, is, you know, how do we implement this? Is this the right thing to implement? What's the cost? Yes, go. Is that what it is? Or is it? No, these, the decision's been made. These are all, we're moving forward with all these because like the cost level piece is you have dollars. It's almost like going to a restaurant, right? It's a this is a $1 restaurant or a $5 restaurant. At some point, like the cost benefit analysis, I don't like, and I'll be very specific to adopting specialized stretch code. And I know there's been a lot of talk about that. And I hear very positive things about what it can do. I also hear some not so positive things, like it creates more costly housing and people that want to put an addition on all of a sudden have to, you know, do a whole bunch of things that they never intended to do. So I guess what do we do with this? Is this go do these? Or is there is there a deeper dive to go do the assessment on what we are going to do?
Yeah, so I'll say it's not a super clear answer to that. It's yes and no, because these of these 10 strategies that you see on the left, some of them are cut and dry. Adopt specialized stretch code, establish a greenhouse gas inventory that has a start and an end, but expand zero emission mobility, that's more of a goal than or it's more of a strategy rather than an action. Some of these are actions, some of these are strategies. I went to a workshop at at a planning conference that I went to a couple of weeks ago that kind of broke down what is a goal, what is an action, what is a strategy? And it put a lot of this in perspective. So some of, like I said, four and three, and some of these are are cut and dry, like the stretch code and the inventory. But the expand zero emission mobility that will have actions attached to it in the final version of this that are going to be recommendations for the planning board, and I'm hoping for support to some extent for these actions that are recommended in the final version of the of the Climate Action Plan that are saying, you know, this is X, Y and Z that the planning board hopes. X, Y, and Z that the Planning Board hopes to accomplish with town center or sidewalks or EV parking requirements that are actually as attainable as, you know, adopting a specialized stretch code or establishing a greenhouse gas inventory.
Okay, yeah, I just, there's a lot here that I'm not familiar with, and I'll have to do my homework on it.
Mark?
All right. I got a couple of questions and comments. So when you say cost level, that's cost to what, the town or to the consumer?
That was total cost in general, be it to the town, be it to the consumer. Some of these are some of these are more directed at the consumer, some of these are much more directed at the town. That's probably, I will admit, one of the ones that were the least informed. There's no price tag necessarily on any of these, but rather just general estimates. Yeah, but more specifically, I'd say to the town rather than the consumer itself.
Okay, because, I mean, some of these things, I think the way I see them laid out here, I sense that it would be a relatively low cost to the town to pursue, but there might be a higher cost for the consumers end of the day. So at some point, you may want to break your cost levels into two columns.
Okay, town and consumer.
What's it going to cost the town to do this, but what's it going to cost the consumers in the long run? Because this is a long run game. This is a long game. So the other thing, and I'm gonna, I said this the last time we spoke about this Climate Action Plan, and it does concern me because things like this get legs real, real fast. And 140 residents answered a survey upon which most of this data is based, and that's 140 residents driving a plan for 6,000. And so I don't think that's a very representative sample. And so I think your outreach is going to have to, A, better define the cost before you talk to people about the proposals, so that people clearly understand, you know, what we're going to ask from them in taxes to pay for pursuing these aspects of the plan, but also what it's going to cost them. Pay per throw, for example, is, I mean, we pay you know, pretty high taxes right now, and we don't have to pay per throw. I understand the motivation behind it, but but I'm not going to be happy having to pay to throw on top of it. So you're going to have to kind of break those things out in a way that people can absorb it. But again, this is 140, what we're looking at here is what 140 residents, you know, pointed you in a direction, and I really got to wonder what the other 5,000 nine, 850 of them said. So and maybe they're not interested, and they're not going to really be interested until they start to understand the implications of these. And most of those are going to be cost implications. And particularly the specialized stretch code, the specialized stretch code, because I'm in the construction trades, I've seen how it plays out in other communities, and it starts to cost a lot of money, a lot more than people think, and it may not come to them directly, but it comes to them in the cost of their housing primarily. So, I mean, I'm good with a lot of the things. I mean, we're looking at this screen now, and that's unfortunately, I mean, if I had a copy of this, I could be flipping back through it, and I can't. But there's a lot about water in here, and certainly Boxborough is deeply concerned about water. And I think we've done a good job, you know, approaching that, you know, with our Water Committee. So, you know, I rank that high on the scale here, and it seems to get lost in the in the, in this strategy list, where it's really a bigger part of everybody's concern, but very, very minimally represented in this chart. But again, the my concern is how a small, how a small sampling of how people feel becomes a driver for what the Select Board is going to have to act upon as like a matter of fact. And and again, that always is a problem, because if it's a small sampling, then, then how, how effective or how representational is that for us? So I don't know how you solve that. I think, you know, your outreach efforts are going to be, obviously, your your engaged community part of this is going to be a big part of it. So but otherwise, I think you've done a great job of kind of breaking it out into something that we can digest. But again, I go back to the small sampling. That does concern me.
Thank you, yeah.
Bob, before I open it up to you, I'm going to just make sure there's no other board comments, and then I'll open it up to public comment, okay? Cindy Markowitz, go ahead.
Yeah, this was a really great presentation, a lot of information, so appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I know the Sustainability Committee over the last number of years has done a lot of implementation of things on the town side, and I think it might be helpful. I don't know if it makes sense to make it part of this reporting, but it would be interesting for folks to see sort of what has been accomplished at the town, at the municipal level. You know, somewhat to Mark's point about, you know, investment versus, you know, kind of payback. So that might be a useful metric to include or metrics to include. And perhaps forward metrics, looking at these, you know, it may not be easy math, but it might be helpful to get some, you've got a cost level there, but maybe there's and you've got qualitative benefits, but maybe we can drive a little bit more about, you know, putting in a little bit, may have some additional financial as well as other benefits. So, you know, just to drive some of the thinking behind, and then that may become more apparent, which ones are worth the investment a little more obviously, but you know, it's going to take a little more work, but that might be helpful to have explore that a little bit further.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you very much, Cindy.
Any other board comments before I open this up to public comment? Okay, Ian, you got what you needed from Planning Board members this evening?
I did, yeah, thank you. And I'm going to supply you guys with this, as well as keep an eye out later next week. I'll have the document, the document itself in its first draft, its first final draft for you guys as well.
Okay, thanks. Bob, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Rebecca. Ian, nice. This is really a nice graph because you can check off things that are done or things that are being worked on. It really just lays it out in all, in a detailed format where you can see exactly which one you're working on, exactly where it plays out. My only question, and you mentioned it a couple of times, and I just want to make sure I understand. I think it has to do with more with item seven, the expand environmental education. It has to do with village center and walkability. You mentioned sidewalks a couple of times. Where there's, my question is the sidewalks, were people talking about sidewalks on side roads? Their home, you know, their side streets, or were they talking about Mass Ave?
So I think I'll point it to number three, I think, is where I was mostly talking about sidewalks, was the zero emission mobility. It seems that with, let me see here, with the Pfeiffer's Day outreach, I was seeing that people were interested in the goal of sustainable sustainable transportation options, and this strategy, zero emission mobility is often framed as and understood as electric vehicles. And so where there was kind of a misalignment, because I'll go back here and just show that there was actually zero zero dots here on this strategy, but, you know, six dots here. It pointed to a theme that there was a desire for sustainability options, sustainable transportation options, and we would assume that that probably meant expansion of the MART bus route, as well as a walkable downtown, which is kind of bringing in the information that I received at the Village for a Day event, where a lot of residents came up and spoke with myself, spoke with Rich as well, and members of the EDC, mentioning that they wanted to see more mobility around the village center.
Okay, okay, great. So the MART bus would definitely be one that the MART bus could be, you know, go to Pfeiffer's Day or in transport people along those lines and along and other events in town. Because my other question, or another comment, I guess, is, you know, sidewalks on 111/Mass Ave, it would, no, I think, as you just mentioned, you know, I think that was kind of a a sore sport, a sore spot with a lot of people that they couldn't walk from on the Village for a Day from one to the other, because there are no sidewalks. So what my point is on this whole thing, to summarize it, and then I'll get off, was that sidewalks in town, yes, the town would have to pay for, and the residents would have to pay for. Sidewalks on Mass Ave, the state would pay for, and yes, eventually the residents would get it through their state taxes, but it's at a, you know, at a much higher level in that the, so, you know, I think one of the things we need to look at with this is if, you know, if we approach the state to get sidewalks on 111 to connect more of the businesses on 111, the upfront cost would be borne by the state versus the town, the residents.
No, that's a, that's a really good way to frame it, that I'll note it's not specifically put that way in the, in the original plan. So yeah, thank you for that. It's a, it's a good way to build support for that item.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, any other public comment about this topic? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much, Ian. That was really great.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, so I'm noting that it's now 8:05. Right now, we're going to continue the public hearing for Beaver Brook Road OSCD special permit. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A and the Boxborough zoning bylaw, 7.5 open space commercial development and 2.3 special permits, the Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to review the application submitted by property owner Capenelli Trigate LLC to amend OSCD 97-01 and OSCD 01-01. So, okay, so we are, boy, we're at the decision process. I think we dug in pretty deep on that last meeting that we had. I believe we're going to pick it up from there this evening. We probably have a fair amount of information to get through still on that decision. My goal is going to be to wrap this discussion up at 10 o'clock tonight, because we do have other meeting agenda items here, but that gives us a solid two hours. And if we do need to continue it at that time, we will go ahead and do so, but hopefully we can get through it. First, I'm going to open it up for a brief public comment period. So if members of the public have comments that they'd like to say at this point, we'll allow that to happen. So raise your hand. Abby, go ahead.
Thanks, Rebecca. Abby Reeve, 205 Old Harvard Road. I'm just going to reiterate with my EDC hat on that I do hope that you will move this project forward and approve it. I think that it does provide great benefits to the town, and it'll also help develop that site and bring good, good business and jobs to Boxborough. So thank you.
Thanks, Abby. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, I'm seeing none. With that, Alec, do you want to go ahead and pull up the decision where we left off?
Absolutely. For members of the board, as well as members of the public who might be following along, the Planning Board previously took up this decision at an October meeting. We finished that portion of the meeting on page 13, just prior to additional findings. There are also additional versions of this decision with board member comments integrated that you'll see me from time to time dragging and dropping into this. So without further ado, I will drop the next set in right here. So these comments come from Cindy Markowitz's draft. It's these additional criteria that, as Cindy noted, were called out in the applicant's application materials, and the question was raised whether or not we need to address them here in this decision.
Where are we on this? We're after?
This is just before additional findings, and at this point, we are in the apologies, special permit criteria, so just below the special permit criteria.
I don't think we have to include all that.
Yeah, I was going to say, if strictly speaking, this, the application is an amendment to the original to the original application, so something that is not being changed in any way wouldn't need to be mentioned. And the site plan stuff would be specific to an individual building or construction, which we're not talking about right here. So I don't think we would need that yet.
Mark, did you have a comment?
So where exactly did we leave off? Were you saying we left off right, right here, where we're looking at on this screen?
Yes, we had left off at the end of this paragraph here, and there had been a lingering comment regarding the proximity of the structures or proposed structures that might be on Lot 800 to the Trail Ridgeway condominiums. And then from there, I imported the last comments on Cindy's draft. Rich and Rebecca did not have comments immediately at this point.
Okay, so what we looked at, what we were looking at last time didn't have these additional criteria in the document. You've moved them from the comments side of the document into the document.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I mean, we never got done talking about the document without talking about all the additional stuff that got added to it. I'm getting confused here now.
Mark, this is how we did it last time. We would bring in comments as we've got through the document and then either yay or nay them as a team, so.
Okay, well, I don't know how, why we would need to have site plan approval as a condition of a special permit process when site plan approval is a foregone conclusion. And we went through this multiple times throughout the document prior, where there's no need for us to reiterate things that are prescribed by law elsewhere. I mean, dimensional requirements, it's prescribed by the code. Parking criteria, it's prescribed by the code. Multiple buildings on one lot, prescribed by the code. So, I mean, why are the, why we have to add additional criteria on top of, that's already prescribed by code to a special permit that is, it just confuses things for me. So.
Cindy, I probably should have let you explain your thoughts behind this. Do you want to go ahead and do that now?
Yeah, thanks. I think, so as Alec is correct, that this was originally identified as the the areas that needed to be met as part of the application. I put them in here, and I might defer to Special Land Use Council. But I do believe we will need somewhere to discuss the dimensional requirements, because those are not, those are different. What's being requested is different than the, what's in the bylaw. The applicant has requested some changes on the dimensional requirements. Similarly, for parking criteria, the applicant has requested some changes. So this was really just to capture and make sure that we address them, whether this is the right place, you know, remains to be seen, but each of these items was identified by the applicant as being applicable. to be seen, but each of these items was identified by the applicant as being applicable. I wanted to make sure that we at least spoke to them, even if it's a brief um reference or or something. So I might defer to to Adam Costa on what how best to do that, but that's why I included them. They were identified by the applicant. I think they are germane as some of them are not um consistent with our zoning bylaw.
Attorney Costa, I know I saw you're on here. Um, do you want to speak to that for us, please?
I I can, sure. So I I suspect what prompted Cindy to request the addition of these, what, four or five topics? Is when I look at the applicant's special permit application form for an open space commercial development uh under section four of that.
Is that me?
No, it's not you.
Okay.
Uh, can you still hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you back now.
Okay, some somehow my video went away, so I apologize for that. Um, so the the application form asks the applicant to identify the applicable sections of the zoning bylaw. And the sections that are listed here are all included. Section two point three special permits, of course. But also section two point five site plan approval, section five point one dimensional requirements, et cetera. Um, I don't think that the board has any sort of an obligation to, for example, make explicit findings with respect to the special, excuse me, the site plan approval criteria. Because this is not an application for site plan approval. It's an application for a special permit with a recognition that there will be future applications for site plan approval for independent individual buildings within the development. Uh, to Cindy's point, when it comes to things like dimensional requirements, parking criteria, et cetera, there may be a basis for you discussing those in the grander context of the special permit application or modification application, to the extent that there are dimensional modifications or uh parking relief that's being requested.
The question, Cindy, so were you getting on the dimensional requirements, were you getting at, and I pulled up the presentation from Campagnelli? I don't know, uh, June sixteenth of twenty twenty five. Um, where they reduced the maximum stories in the prior and the now expired OSCD was sixty feet. Um, and then it's been reduced to forty five feet, four stories to three stories. Are you s- are you citing in addition to the parking, like where is that specified somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, I think we haven't talked about the dimensional requirements. Um, the applicant has asked for slightly revised dimensional requirements on the table that they provided. And I think we need to discuss it. So whether it's here or we can just reference Exhibit A, you know, attached. Um, but the board needs to decide if we agree with those dimensional requirements. So again, if this isn't the right place, you know, we can move on and make sure that, but I just want to make sure that these get addressed somewhere in the in the findings and or conditions, so.
Yeah, I I'm good with the attach, the Exhibit Six approach that was in their presentation. I see uh Attorney Schneider has her hand up, so I can I'll yield, but I agree, we have to somehow address what the the new dimensional requirements are. Um, but anyway, I'll I'll yield.
Attorney Schneider, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the board. Johanna Schneider on behalf of Campagnelli. Um, as uh members Markowitz and Gazzardi did point out, part of our application materials um do include, as the other permit decisions did, a chart with the updated uh dimensional requirements or, you know, dimensional adjustments that we are seeking approval for with respect to the new buildings on the site. Um, in addition, there are numerous references throughout the draft decision that we have been reviewing um to the proposed reduction in the number of parking spaces. So I think that those things are addressed in various places here. Um, I don't think that they necessarily and Cindy, I'm happy that you called these things out because you're right, we just need to make sure that they're included. But I think they are included um without needing a separate discussion um for calling out. Again, we've got that attachment which is mirrors the attachment that went with the prior iterations of this permit. It's just we're looking to substitute that in. And as I said, the parking reduction is documented throughout this uh draft decision.
Thank you, Johanna.
Rebecca, if I may, I I'd like to ask that these placeholders be left here as we go through the rest of the document um and then circle back. Just to make sure, because again, we have, yes, the exhibit has been provided, but we haven't discussed uh the the exhibit about dimensional requirements. So um, you know, I'm just asking that as placeholders, you know, we we can continue on with the findings, but um I want to make sure that we've actually rendered an opinion on these items, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. Um, Alec, can you highlight these to be returned to? Um, Rich, go ahead.
No, I'm I'm good with continuing to move.
Okay.
I guess if just back back up one second in the spirit of continuing to move, the the I had one comment before we got into this section at the end of the last piece where it talks about trail ridge condominiums. Applicant would require to mitigate any identified impacts to the abutting condominium complex. So we're requiring a mitigation, but that mitigation would come in the form of a of an agreement condition on a site plan approval, not here. So one way to do it is just to put a put sort of like a a com, you know, tail end of that, say, as um provided in any site plan approval. Um, that's an easy way to do it. Uh, the language may be a little strong for this permit, this request. Um, but my, you know, my simple approach is just to add a comment at the end. Um, you know, pursuant to to be decided in a site or pursuant to a site plan, uh pursuant to a future site plan. Yeah. And then that was my comment there, and then I was gonna hit it right. Rebecca, as we went to, unless there's any discussion on that, I was gonna go right to additional findings and make a comment on A and B. Site gate does a good job of describing what's happening here. Um, B is confusing and it's background information. Um, it, I mean, it's talking about the the prior decision from O one phase one development. I mean, it's just going on and on about phase. I I like the what the prior period was. I don't know that we need any of this. But if you go all the way down to the end, there's a sentence there, "The board finds that the rationale set forth in Decision ninety seven oh one and O one oh one applies to the two thousand twenty five master plan and accordingly finds as follows." I would keep that, like everything before that I'd get rid of, and I would keep that because I think this section of Romanets actually does a I think some of the language needs to be fixed because I think there's some things that are out of sequence with the with how this was rewritten, but I think yeah, that now we get into, okay, what's happening here with the two thousand twenty five master plan? Um, the and so the, like, we can go through each of these. I but the to me, this is where the rubber sort of meets the road is what is happening with this master plan and I the timing of things. And I know there's language in different places that talks about how the timing works that may not exactly be consistent with this. But this is the place to start, I believe.
I, thanks, Rich. I I'm wondering if, and Attorney Schneider, you should speak to this, but if was that left in as previous verbiage from the 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 um previous agreements?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's why that's in there. But I but I don't disagree that we could probably do without it. You know, again, as we've talked about, as we've been reviewing this decision altogether, we did try to port over as much language and as much of the approach from the prior permit decisions just to, you know, have some continuity, but I don't I don't have an issue taking out sort of the background and the history, notwithstanding that it is largely based on the the O one decision.
Alec, can you scroll up because it's a fair amount of information that is proposed to be stricken? Uh, I'd just like to give the board a chance to read through and see if people feel comfortable with that. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think there's a a definition here of the commercial development period that we're gonna need to address. Um, so I want to make sure we don't lose the actual stated definition. I think the reason this is in there was that the applicant was teeing up sort of the next few um phrases based on what was previously granted. So we just need to be careful that we're not granting something that um doesn't uh, you know, that doesn't still want to be um identified. So we just need to be careful as we go forward.
Yeah, and then when you, so I'm sorry, yep, that's fair. If we need to make sure we're defining it.
It needs to be somewhere.
And it it actually, when you go to Romanet two in down below, it says uh, "Once substantial use of this permit is commenced, the applicant's rights and earnings shall fully or irrationally vest, and this special permit will not be lapped till the expiration of the extended commercial development period as defined in subsection four below." So is that now the new commercial development period or I hope we don't have yet another definition of extended commercial development period. I just but we we're providing for a place where it's defined in subsection four below. And then you go to subsection four below, and I note that that's different from the front page of the document. That subsection four says that uh, "The commercial development period shall commence on the date of recording of the new open space restriction" uh, and ending the twentieth anniversary, but in the very beginning of the document, it just has a date certain of hmm January first, twenty forty five. Which I kind of like. This is the date. I mean, we can debate the date, but I kind of like the specificity of a date. So there's just some consistency back and forth, but I I think the um that section does it is trying to do a good job of outlining exactly what's happening.
So I guess um my two cents would be, this would be something that you're pointing out the inconsistencies with dates and and schedules and stuff like that, and that makes me a little nervous um without Adam taking a peek at that closer um about striking such a a chunk of information there. I guess um it might be useful to have him take a closer look at that. And I'm asking you to do it on the fly. It's a chunk of information. I'm sorry, Adam.
Mostly referenced the previous decision, but that's where I'd say it might be redundant, given what we've already amended, like the background portions to.
Cindy, you were um starting to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I think um we could best use Adam's expertise by identifying what the specifics of the issues are and let him craft the language. So in other words, um, I'm still not comfortable with open space. Uh, I think we're, what are we calling it now? Uh, open space, we're calling, I think we're either going to call it conservation restriction or somehow equate those terms. So that's one issue I have. Uh, the commercial development period itself, we need to define what that's going to be. Um, can you scroll down a little bit further? Um.
Yeah, so let's let's take each one of those. If we can, open space restrictions, I think that Alec did a nice job and put some information in there. I think we do want to change that, right? And I I don't know if the applicant has a concern, but it's it's, what are we talking about? A conservation restriction as opposed to an open space restriction? Is that right, Alec?
Uh, yes, it's my recommendation after meeting with members of the conservation team um and better understanding what can be done with an with a operations and maintenance plan that we can achieve the goals set forth by the applicant for the conservation land as well as the previous goals of the open space restrictions through an outright conservation restriction.
Okay, I believe the applicant has previously um expressed that they were fine with either or, but uh Johanna, would you like to go ahead and confirm that for us now?
Yes, we are entirely agnostic as to the approach that the board wants to take on this. We're fine. Um, if the board would like it to be, you know, a formal statutory conservation restriction, the only thing that I will note um, and I think Alec can add some more color to this, is that if we are going to do a formal CR as opposed to just an open space restriction, which is how many of the restrictions previously were done. Um, those can't be done within a hundred twenty days, which is what this draft currently contemplates. That's a twelve to eighteen month process, um, you know, through both the town and through EEA at the state level. Um, and so if the board desires to do this as a formal conservation restriction, again, we're fine with that. But I think that we do need to significantly alter the suggested timing. Um, so, you know, we should just keep that in mind as we work through this section.
Madam Chairperson, if I could uh pick up from what Johanna said, I would echo the sentiment from the applicant. Um, if we went the the formal route of a conservation restriction, which again is my recommendation, that does require review and approval from the state. Um, it is a much more structured and firm restriction type. It leaves less ambiguity and it provides better preservation uh preservation ability to the land itself while still maintaining open access and the ability to to conduct recreation on the site. Um, my recommendation would be the the applicant's language and the conditions that states a hundred twenty days be revised to eighteen months, um, as that can often be the regulatory timeline about which the state needs to review and approve. However, at the end, we get a much stronger restriction that is actually in my recommendation monitored and maintained jointly by Sudbury Valley trustees and um by the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Um, board members, are you in agreement? Um, have any comments or questions about that? Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, so I I want to um try to make that uh conservation restriction happen as quickly as possible. Um, I don't know if there's a mechanism by which we can call it one and change it to another, but I'd like to see that happen. Um, you know, upon uh expiration of the appeal period, uh, or at least the beginning of the process. So um, whether that's um, you know, there's language that can be put in to either call it an open space restriction, to be converted to a conservation restriction, that would be helpful to know, but my my hope is to have that um process begin as soon as possible. I think that would be most protective for the town. Thanks.
Good point, Cindy. Thank you. Um, Attorney Costa. You seem to be muted.
Let's try that again.
Yeah.
Apologies, technological difficulties tonight. Um, so what I might suggest through you, Madam Chair, is uh sort of a two-step process that I suspect Attorney Schneider is familiar with, where upon the issuance of the decision and the passage of the appeal period, a declaration of restriction can be recorded at the Registry of D's. It doesn't require approval by EO EEA and effectively uh reflects the intent of the parties to restrict the land. Um, I think that's a better approach than a two-part process that would involve the recording of an open space restriction that would then be converted to a conservation restriction because they serve slightly different purposes. So it's sort of like starting with an apple and turning it into an orange. And I think that the better approach is a declaration of restriction that is an apples-to-apples comparison with a conservation restriction uh with the exception of it not having been approved in advance by EO uh EO EEA. And then that declaration of restriction can provide a degree of protection in the interim because I concur with what Alec has said, that the process is a twelve to eighteen month process, and I've had experiences where that process has taken longer than eighteen months. So uh, it is it is good to have some protection in the interim. Obviously, you have the condition of your decision, which would be enforceable, but having something on record in the chain of title in the short term is also beneficial.
Thanks, Adam. Uh, so any thoughts, any additional thoughts on that?
I like that.
Yeah, we, okay, make this revision?
Yeah, I think Cindy, you raise a good point, and and Adam, thanks for the solution because I think that is there a chance that it doesn't actually get approved?
Go ahead, Adam.
So it it's rare, I would say, in circumstances like these. Um, there are instances where the conservation restriction uh would not get the approval of EO EEA for a number of reasons. Number one, because the land for some particular reason doesn't qualify to be uh restricted conservation land. some particular reason doesn't qualify to be restricted conservation land. Because you can't find a holder of the restriction, that tends to be the most common one. You can't find a third party that will be willing to hold the restriction because of the nature of the conservation parcel, challenges with respect to enforcement and future costs of enforcement and a funding source for that enforcement. So there are instances where conservation restrictions don't don't come to fruition. I think that, you know, by including this as a condition of approval and requiring first the declaration of restriction and then subsequently the recording of a full conservation restriction following EO EEA approval, if for whatever reason, unexpected, but if for whatever reason the applicant can obtain the approval of EO EEA, well, then the applicant could come back before you to modify the condition to potentially substitute an open space restriction for the conservation restriction. But again, I don't foresee that happening in these circumstances, knowing what I do about the parcel.
I like it.
Russ.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a question for Adam. I do like what he's suggesting. We've seen this done by other boards and other communities in the past. But I just want to make sure that the way I understand it is correct. The declaration of restriction would allow us to come into the planning board with an actual site plan approval. And should that site plan approval be successful, we would be able to obtain a building permit without any of these restrictions limiting the timeframe to advance an initial development. Would that be correct?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Adam.
So I hesitate to speak for the board in terms of saying what will or won't or would or wouldn't satisfy the board, but I certainly that would be my intention. The intention here is that you're the the board doesn't want to place an obligation, I wouldn't think, upon the applicant that is beyond the applicant's control. The the reason that we won't have a conservation restriction ready for recording at the Registry of Deeds in 30 or 60 days is not going to be the consequence of anything the applicant does. It's going to be because we know the process and the process requires negotiation of the terms, which it's a form document that's provided by EO EEA. So those the terms are not particularly negotiable. But then it requires submittal to EO EEA, which then gets assigned to a staff or viewer who's going to perform a full review and get comments back, which are then going to be incorporated into the document. And that process can take over a year, in my experience. And so I think the objection here, the the objective here is to provide a two-part solution, starting with the declaration of restriction, eventually replacing it with a CR. But regardless of which of those happens to be on record at any given point in time, I would view the applicant as being in compliance with the terms and conditions of the special permit and therefore able to proceed with whatever aspect of the project it wishes to proceed with, including the making of applications for site plan approval for individual phases.
Thank you.
Okay. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, this is just a question. I'm looking at the original master plan map and on that map that has the shaded conservation or proposed conservation areas of 94 acres in green, there's lot 17A, lot 16, and then there's this little parcels A and B. Have we captured that? Is the applicant, I don't know whether those lots are still formatted that way. Does the applicant know what I'm referring to and is it their intention to include lots A and B, which are highlighted in green as if they're to be included in that conservation?
Yes. Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Cindy, if you look at Romanet 1B, it lists out the areas that we are proposing to make subject to what is we're now, I think, calling a declaration of restriction, and it is open space restriction areas A, B, and D, which are smaller areas and lots 16 and 17.
I'm not seeing A, B, and D.
Madam Chairperson, do you want me to put the map up on the screen?
Alec, if you could pull something up for us to look at. Thank you.
So up there in the right-hand corner is A and B, but on that list, and I think I remember the applicant submitting something that might have removed some of that language. So when you went, when you just in the document, it only referenced 16, 17, and D. So what happened to A and B? Is that proposed to be?
Are you able to, are you able to zoom in a little bit more?
But I think this is the land in question, which, looking at the decision, it's not included in in IB, that section, Romanet I, letter B. Is it in your, is it still the applicant's intent to place these two, these two minor lots? I assume that A and B refer to these two minor stretches that are separated by the way here. Is it still your intent to place these into a conservation restriction?
Yes, yes.
I will, on the side, update the language here with that, so that when we jump back over, it'll be there.
Cindy, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wonder whether we ought to be identifying those part-by-parcel numbers, because this map is, and I think the map is an exhibit, but I think it would be helpful to, you know, sometimes the exhibits don't come along with the decisions. So it might be useful to have them all identified by parcel, if that's possible.
Russ, go ahead.
The the two small lots that are being referred to as A and B, it is the intent for those to be restricted use as described. The A and R plan that was approved many, many years ago refer to those parcels as A and B. So that's just consistent to the deeded plans and the recorded plans of the past.
Thank you for clarifying.
Madam Chairperson, if it if it would please the board, in the administrative review of this decision, following the close of public hearing, we, the staff, can go in and we can swap out these areas A, areas B, lots 16, lot 17, and replace them with their parcel numbers.
I suggest you use both, because this will be an exhibit to the decision, so.
We can do that, too. Yep.
That's great. Thank you, Alec.
I'll switch back over to the decision now.
Thank you.
So that was the open space item, Cindy, that you listed. I'm sorry, if I could just comment the the, I know, Cindy, you were going to mention the the time period, development period, but before we get there in three, I was okay with two, two, Romanet two, three, it talks about no eventual, the applicant required to record that, and we'll have to clean that language up. The, you know, it's really now the the declaration of determiny or intent to, we'll have to come up with the right words there. But unless and until all final permits and approvals required for the 2025 master plan have been granted, and all appeals and all appeal periods have thereupon expired. What are all the final permits and approvals? Is, I guess I was of the belief that this is the permit for the master plan. Am I, is there something else that I'm missing? Alec, do you know?
In my opinion, that could be up for interpretation. I think between myself, Attorney Costa, Attorney Schneider, all three of us could have different interpretations on it. Obviously, theirs have more teeth than mine. So I would ask the applicant, is it, was it your intent in drafting this section that this would refer to final approval and appeal and lapse of appeal period on this permit, or were you referring to subsequent permits as well?
The intent was really for it to just be this permit. But again, cloning language from the prior permit decisions, you know, in an attempted continuity.
So, so Rich, I agree with you. This is kind of ambiguous, because I wasn't sure if that referenced, you know, building permits. Again, the, I think the intent is to try and get these recorded sooner than later. And I think with with this with this permit only, so could we change that language?
Yeah, I think with this language is, I agree. I mean, I think this language is trying to say is, look, the the conservation restriction or the the notification, Adam, you said it so nicely, and I tried to write it, and I can't read my writing, declaration of intention, I think, to file a conservation restriction. I think the whole point is that's not going to happen until, or they're not obligated to do that until this has been approved and the appeal period has expired. After that, then yes, they'll file that, and we'll have to pick a timeframe. You know, I don't know how long you need for that. Is it 10 days, 120 days? Like, I don't know how how long. It's just, I think we'll, we can figure out what the right timing is for that. Assuming we agree that that's the right approach. Okay, you've cleared, that's been cleared up for me then.
Right, but I think we should put a time on it. Adam has a.
What's the right timeline? Adam or?
Adam, go ahead.
Sure. So I I don't know the entire history, because I obviously wasn't involved when this was originally before your board. But I I've seen these sorts of conditions crafted before, where the applicant has made a commitment and therefore the board requires it as a condition of approval, that something be done that would be irrevocable, like conveying away a parcel of property, divesting itself of an interest in in a in a in a lot or a parcel of property, granting a conservation restriction. And typically, an applicant's want want some assurance that before it does this irrevocable thing, it is guaranteed that it's actually able to use the permit that it's receiving in exchange for this commitment. And sometimes there are ancillary permits. It's not uncommon for an application to the planning board for a special permit or site plan review to be accompanied by an application to the zoning board for a variance, or an application to the Conservation Commission for an order of conditions, or an application to the Board of Health for a Title V permit or a septic permit. And so we have this language that says that the applicant isn't required to do this irrevocable thing, in this case, recording a conservation restriction, unless and until, quote, "all final permits and approvals required for this plan have been granted and the appeal periods have passed." Well, this is a little different, because we're amending a permit that previously issued. The applicant's before us, the applicant is effectively telling us, I think, and and Johanna can correct me if I'm mistaken, but essentially telling us that no, we don't need to go back to conservation, the Conservation Commission in connection with this 2025 master plan, and we don't need to go to Board of Health, and we're not before the ZBA. This is, this is the application we've made and the application that we need approved. And so if that's the case, then yes, you can strike that generic language about any and all final permits and approvals. And you can just say, the applicant shall be required to record the conservation restriction within X number of days, following expiration of the appeal period. 30 days is more than enough time. Once the appeal period passes, this appeal can, this decision can be recorded the next, the next day, the next morning. And so it only seems fair that the conservation restriction or the declaration of restriction will be will be recorded soon thereafter. The only caveat here is we do need to work through the language. So if you're not including a copy of the declaration of restriction as an attachment to your decision, which would be unusual, then we do need to work through that language. It's not terribly complex, typically not all that controversial. But I I actually just pulled out the last declaration of restriction that I worked on. I actually worked on it for a private client. A board required it as a condition of approval. And we negotiated it. And I I remember the negotiation. It, I went a few rounds with staff trying to get the language tweaked, so it said what we needed it to say, so it said what the board needed it to say. So 30 days, 60 days, somewhere in that timeframe is probably enough time to get that done. But I see Johanna has her hand up, so she may have other thoughts.
Go ahead, Attorney.
Thank you. It may be a 30-day or 60-day process. We had originally proposed 120 days, just so that we were not under the gun. Staff wasn't under the gun, and Adam wasn't under the gun. If you want to shorten that period, I think, you know, 60 or 90 days is fine. I think 30, again, maybe too short a period, just because we haven't put pen to paper yet. We don't know what this is going to look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think 60 or 90 is is fine. If you want to put 60, I mean, from my personal opinion. Yeah.
So you want to delete that section, unless and until all final permit permits?
Ah, you have to keep the appeals period, though. It's in two. It it really, I mean, it's really in, I think we lost the bubble on this. Unless and until this permit has been approved and the appeal period has expired. Until this. Yeah.
Madam Chairperson, for the sake of continuing on, I think this last sentence here captures the intent of what we want it to do. I would recommend that we proceed on to additional items and that staff circle back to this and revise this section specifically, and then a subsequent condition to to cover the the intent.
Rich, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I I think there's sufficient language in here that I would I would think if we can reach, like, an understanding of the tenants and then let Adam and 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 Alec and Ms. Johanna, you know, Ms. Snyder, whoever else, work out the language, I'd be totally fine with that.
Okay, continue on, Alec.
The next big thing, and multiple people had flagged this, too, a couple places in the document, but we're finally coming to it, the question of how long the the development period will be.
I'm not comfortable with the 20, 20th anniversary, personally.
Did, so the last meeting we had, I thought there were two options. One, it was the 20th anniversary, or two, this was two options offered by the applicant. 20th anniversary, 20 years, or 15 years from the issuance of a permit for the first building. Thought those were the two options.
Yeah, with a timer on. If after five years, we have, we don't have a permit for the first building, then the timer starts. So it ends up being, at worst case, 20.
Yeah, just clarify, those were the two options presented by the applicant. But we, you know, of course, this is our decision.
Yeah, I think I like the second one that they offered. So there's a, you know, they obviously have a vested interest in actually having buildings happen sooner. And then it's a shorter timer of 15. I understand them wanting to have a significant chunk of time to work with, because it it takes a long time to to build things. Like, just, you know, just the experience of the review, the thorough review that we give. It takes significant time, and then they have to actually build, build construction, and they don't they don't build and then look for a buyer. They need to find a buyer and who has basically cash in hand, ready to do something, and then they want to throw up a building very quickly. So they want that tight turnaround time. But it'll look very, very calm up until they have one. So I understand that that needing that long window of time.
What timeframe are you, were you thinking, Rebecca?
I'd originally thrown out 10 years, honestly, to just get this ball rolling. But I certainly would not go over 15. That's that's what the original agreement was.
And I concur. I don't believe anything more than 15 is necessary. The applicant will always have an opportunity to come back to the board for an extension at that time, but I think 15 years is more than reasonable and is consistent with the prior permit.
So what was the wording of the prior permit? If it said 15 years, what were the contingencies like on when the project, like, building permit was issued and stuff like that? Like, when did the clock start?
It was commenced on the date that the restrictive covenant was recorded with the registry. It was commenced on the date that the restrictive covenant was recorded with the registry. And terminated on the fifteenth anniversary of such date, reading this historical language that I wanted to delete.
Yeah, see that were, I mean, I feel like. Where, wait a minute, I just want to get, can you get back to that piece? I just want to read it again.
It was up above, it was. Deemed to have lapsed after a two-year period. Do you find that language?
I mean, I might be inclined to, you know. Comply with this original recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I guess it comes down to what what's the applicant, what's, is that okay with the applicant? I know this is, you know, we get to write conditions. I'd like to think we could write something that's not appealed. But the only question that I have to that Rebecca is what if? They, like, this is a pretty substantial project and it's gonna take time. What if they need more time? Like, I'd hate to see something get rushed. I know we're still talking fifteen years. I'm not, I'm not, you know, naive enough to think that we're, you know, we're only talking about five years and that's a problem, but. That's my only concern is if. We we truncate it and they get rushed. And then what are the consequences of that?
Yeah, I guess the last time that happened, when the fifteen-year expiration was approaching, they came back and asked for five. More and they got it granted. So, you know, seems to me that that would be what would happen. Johanna, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the board can tell from what we had proposed, the two options, either twenty years beginning on the date. Of the recreation of the open space restrictions or fifteen years from the first building permit. Those are the scenarios that we think fit our business model best and will provide us with sufficient time in order to. You know, be able to plan and find and attract tenants. You know, as has been noted, these are, you know, not spec buildings. These are. Built-to-suit structures and, you know, we think that that, you know, either fifteen years from the first building permit or twenty years from. You know, basically this winter. Is the appropriate window of time to allow us to. You know, to build this out in accordance with the master plan without rushing things. Yes, of course, it's possible that we could come back and ask for an extension. But I think for, you know, financing purposes and long-range planning purposes. It's hard to count on, okay, well, we'll come back and the board will give us a five-year extension because we don't know if we're going to get a five-year extension. I'm assuming that at that time, many of these board members with whom we've worked very closely over the years will no longer be serving on the board. I know we all get tired of our. Evening gigs of public service. And so I think it's not assured that we would get that extension. And so I think we would appreciate having the certainty. Of either fifteen years from building permit or twenty years from the restriction.
In the fifteen-year from building permit, Johanna has a five-year clock on the, like, so it wouldn't exceed the twenty years? Are we understanding that correctly?
I don't know that we built that in, but I don't think I should let Russ answer that, but I, but I don't think we have an issue with that.
Basically, we're saying we get the fifteen. Assuming that there's a project within the next year, two years, it's a shorter overall development cycle.
You don't want us to take this permit mothball it, sit on it and then. You know, cry that, you know, we're out of time.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, go ahead.
If I could interject, so typically, our decisions are written that. That it has to be recorded within two years or the permit shall lapse. Johanna, if we're, and to your client, if we were to write this as a. As a sooner than, or which of the the sooner options were to occur, either issuance of the first building permit. Or two years from the date of decision at the time of recording, would that be acceptable to you and your client?
Alec, I'm just doing math in my head, which always takes a while.
That would max out at about seventeen years from the date of the lapse of the appeals period.
If there was no building.
If there was no building.
If there is no building. I'm going to see if that's acceptable to my client.
That would be acceptable. This is Russell speaking. Thank you. I can get my head around that. I mean, that that delays the, well, let me just, before I say, before I go there, that. That delays the conservation restrictions. That delays everything, yes? Alec or no?
No, the obligation for the both recording the declaration of restriction starts at the end of the appeals period. And then the eighteen-month window would theoretically come before all of that. However. It's my my opinion that the two could be concurrent. The conservation restriction does not have to hamper their timeline for proceeding. To a site plan review and then a building permit, whereas they've already declared through the declaration which lots would be in conservation restriction.
But they, but they, in the absence of a building. This this decision, they would have two-year window on. And they'd have, but they'd have a a more immediate, and they'd have a more immediate timeframe, ninety days for the. Conservation. I like your solution. I see Russ and lawyers are all of a sudden putting their hands up, so maybe I'll stop talking.
Russ, did you have a comment here?
Yeah, in the effort of, I think, in a conversation with Alec today. Someone had tabled perhaps just making this a little simpler and placing a timeframe. And disassociate it with restrictions and building permits and site plan approvals. I would propose to the board. That we, at the commencement or the the duration of the permit would commence. When the appeal period expires, which would be sometime in the first quarter. Two thousand twenty-six and have a seventeen and a half year. Run and we could just put a date out front and it expires, then it's not reliant on anything else other than that.
So you're basically, I think, Russell, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that twenty years is now seventeen and a half.
Which would commence once the appeal period expires for this decision, yes?
I I favor an actual date as opposed to a a complex formula, though.
Yeah, I'm okay with this because it's the, it's the way the old decision was done, I think.
I think it's slightly different, right? It just, you know, launches it as of the date that, you know, we can be certified as. There having been no appeals. And then it's, you know, seventeen point five years from that. It is a heck of a lot easier to to track it and to measure it.
Yeah, because if there was an appeal, your concern would be, well.
Then the appeal is.
I'm okay with that.
I'm not comfortable with changing the terms of this from the original. Document.
So you're saying that with fifteen?
I'm saying, I I feel like we should probably be keeping this. Highlighted portion of this.
Madam Chairperson, you're specifically referring to the fifteen-year period. Commencing on the date that the restrictive covenant was recorded with the registry.
Right, because when the restrictive covenant gets recorded, remind me again. What what did we have there? Within sixty days?
Sixty days from the end of the appeal, so. Basically shortening it by two years and. Three months, I think.
Well, what was the timing? When did they have to file the the? When did they have to file the decision last time?
Within. It was not timed based on the decision. It was based on the restrictive covenant.
Right, which had to be. Filed by when? Was it after the appeal period?
I thought everything waited till after the appeal period because I think as Attorney Costa noted. The wanting to protect yourself from doing the irrecoverable, I can't say that word. The thing you can't go back on, waiting until all of the appeals have, you know, timed out. So that you know that you're sure on it at that point. I thought that's how all the clocks ran.
Adam, I see your hand up.
So I was, through you, Madam Chair, I was gonna try and answer the question. I. I do have the original permit in front of me as well, so it it referenced the restrictive covenant. Being recorded with the registry, quote, upon completion of the golf course and issuance of a certificate of occupancy therefore.
Well, that's helpful.
Yeah, that's consistent with my recollection, which is that there wasn't actually a timeframe for getting that done.
You know, I I'm also going to complicate things a bit, but I'm I'm gonna say a few things, so. If we, if we look at the language, I think it was on the next page, Alec, if you could scroll back down to, there we go, so. The way that this Roman numeral three is structured, it now says that in no event shall the applicant. Be required to record the conservation restriction. I guess we're gonna say. We're gonna strike that as well and we're gonna say the applicant shall be required to record a declaration of restriction. Probably say no later than sixty days following the lapse of the appeal period for this decision to be followed by a conservation restriction. That's fine. But I I want to say a few things. So first of all. This is a special permit, so you need to remember first and foremost that the applicant has the right to proceed at risk with a special permit. Now, I'm not saying that this applicant's going to do that. We've already heard the applicants' council make reference to financing and. We know that certainly institutional lenders don't appreciate applicants proceeding at risk under a permit that is subject. To a pending appeal. But the law does give applicants the right to proceed at risk under a special permit, so. I suppose that to do that, the applicant needs to comply with the conditions of approval. So even though the. Decision wouldn't require the applicant to record a declaration of restriction until. Sixty days or between zero and sixty days following the lapse of the appeal period. The applicant could choose to voluntarily do so and then to attempt to proceed at risk with the special permit. By, for example, making application to the board for. Site plan review or site plan approval of a of a phase of the project. I say all that because I think that it it also causes me to question whether the wisest approach here. Highlighted by the fact that when you just asked the question, well, when was the restrictive covenant to be recorded before? And you didn't like my answer, which was upon completion of the golf course. I wonder whether it makes sense. If not to go with the approach that the applicant has suggested, which is the the choice of a date certain. And I'm not suggesting that date certain should be what. Rebecca is saying it should be, calculated ten to fifteen years from from the date of issuance of this this decision. I'm not suggesting it should be what what Mark and others have suggested it should be, which is maybe something less than that. I I have no position. That's up to you as a board. But I guess you could either choose a date certain. Or simply tie it to the date of issuance of the decision. Let's not mess with appeal periods. Let's not mess with subsequent recordings. Of a declaration of restriction or a conservation restriction. You ought to just establish this commercial development period. As calculated from the date of issuance of the decision. That's gonna be a date certain. You know the date on which your decision issues. It's the date that you bring it to the town clerk and it gets stamped in. And so it's easy to calculate the time period, whether it's ten years or fifteen years or seventeen and a half years. I think it makes the most sense to either choose a date certain. Or calculate it based upon the date of issuance of the decision. When we begin to try and tie it to. Something like the recording of a document that hasn't even been drafted, much less negotiated or recorded at the registry. Or we talk about trying to run it concurrently with or piggyback it onto. The two-year lapse provision that exists in the statute and in your bylaws for special permits. It starts to add layers of complexity that I don't think we necessarily need to add here, or I wouldn't recommend because. I can, I can make this conversation even more complicated by talking about. The rights you have or don't have to alter that two-year lapse period and whether the. Recording of the declaration of restriction constitutes a vesting of rights that triggers that two-year lapse period, so. It can get real confusing real fast if we don't choose a date that can be easily calculated.
That's great feedback, Adam. Thank you very much. I do like the clarity around that. It does simplify things. Go ahead, Johanna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have an issue at all with setting some sort of, you know, term to the permit. I am somewhat uncomfortable, however, Adam. Would not providing for some sort of allowance for an appeal period. If we do it, you know, from the date that the board issues a decision and then. You know, twenty-two days later, somebody has filed an appeal, we could be tied up in litigation for, you know. Two to five years and at that time, the time that we have to perform under the permit is just. Frittering away and it sort of ignores, you know, tolling of permits during the pendency of appeals. So I, you know, I guess a way around that is to have an even longer commercial development period or to go back to, I think, what. Alec had originally suggested, which is that, you know, when the appeal period runs, you know, which is issuance of the decision plus, you know, thirty days. Maybe key it that way for simplicity and then again to make sure that we are not. Losing time on the permit if someone does appeal it.
Makes sense. Thank you, Johanna. Go ahead, Alec.
Through you, Madam Chair. So so I I I appreciate that that perspective and that's not wrong. This was addressed in the original decision back in nineteen ninety-seven. Where after the 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 definition of the fifteen-year period, the following sentence appeared. It said. The commercial development period shall be extended by one day for each day. That any necessary permit or approval for all or any portion of the commercial development. Is the subject of a pending appeal or litigation. So effectively, it it incorporated through that sentence. A tolling provision. It said if there's a lawsuit that's filed, there's an appeal that's filed. However long that appeal lasts, you're extending the commercial development period by that number of days. Or another way to look at it is the commercial development period is not starting until that litigation is resolved. I I I think that that language is fine. It's 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 reasonable. Certainly, it's consistent with the perspective. Of the courts with respect to to appeals of land use decisions. Indicating that there's no expectation that an applicant is 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 going to proceed during the pendency of an appeal. I think the only way that I would possibly modify what was in the nineteen ninety-seven decision is maybe adding to the end of that. You know, so long as the applicant does not choose to proceed at risk. If the applicant chooses to proceed at risk. Well, then the commercial development period should be running concurrently with the litigation because that's the applicant's choice. And that language wasn't in the ninety-seven permit. I don't know why. It might have been because I don't. I don't remember the year that they changed that provision in forty-eight nine, but it might have been after ninety-seven. Yeah, so maybe it didn't exist at the time, but it exists now.
Thanks, Adam. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Adam. I I think that's been very helpful, what what the the two points that you just raised. So I I'm in favor of that. Because you just tacked that on to the end and I think that would probably satisfy the applicant from what they just said before. And then the real question would be, how many years? And if it's fifteen that Rebecca can live with, can can the applicant? Live with it? Rebecca and Cindy both stated fifteen is kind of like their hard number. Can the applicant live with that with a tolling period?
Go ahead, Russ.
Let me just say it this way. I think there's other items to be negotiated throughout.
I think there's other items to be negotiated throughout the conditions of this permit that are very sensitive to a bunch of um, concerns and beliefs. Um, I'm reluctant to agree and parse a decision without knowing the entire decision. We, I think we've got some sensitive decisions about a buffer at back of eight hundred. We've proposed something. Um, there's been some discussion on a building height and discussion about a duration. Um, you know, we, we've been here for four and a half years and um, you know, the ebbs and flows of economic cycles are things that we cannot predict. Um, and we've gone through an office pandemic. Uh, I don't think twenty years or seventeen and a half years is unreasonable. I just don't think that the fifteen-year period aligns with the amount of investment, both in financial capital and human capital that's being, being made here and just just going through how these restrictions will be created over the next eighteen to twenty-four months is a significant financial burden. Um, and we just need time to, to harvest an opportunity that's being permitted here. And I would like the board to um, to think about that as they, as they tack a, a period of time on here. I, I, the last offer was seventeen and a half years. I, I personally, of course, somewhat selfishly believe that that's very, very reasonable. And um, I would like the board to consider that.
All right, uh, okay, thank you, Russ, because, I mean, I just wanted to hear you weigh in on that. I, I, I mean, frankly, I, I don't understand what the pushback is from between fifteen and twenty years. So, uh, I mean, I'd be happy with seventeen years. I'd vote for that right now. But uh, we need four votes to get this done. And so the question is, do we have the four votes? Um, sounds like seventeen you'd be okay with. Uh, sounds like fifteen, two members may not be okay with. Um, so how do we get, how do we kind of get to where we gotta go here? Because, I mean, we're just now, now we're talking about two years. Is, a- a- as, as an obstacle to getting this done.
I, I think, Mark, not to, sorry if I'm cutting it. Keep.
Oh, I'm done.
Uh, what I'm hearing is there's probably about four or five things we need to get through.
Yep.
Um, and maybe we, maybe we just table that one and let's get through the four or five things. Like I, you know, Cindy, you wanted to talk about um, the, the dimensional table, right? We talk, like, so like, what are the, what are the things that we need to, that are the sort of deal points here that we can kind of talk through as a board? And then we can tick through that and say what will work, what won't.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we just highlight this item here to come back to. And then, you know, when we've gone through all of the um, all of the items, uh, as, as Russ is identifying, there's probably a couple of sticking points. So um, it might make sense to just get through them um, and then revisit this.
I, I, I just don't want to lose the work that we've just done to get this far. I mean, I, I guess if it's down to simply the number of years, um, then we're somewhere between fifteen and twenty. And uh, it would start when they received their decision. And if there was any appeal, it would be extended by that amount. I mean, if we can get that as a baseline, then when we come back to this and then all we're gonna be talking about is how many years will, will this decision?
Yeah, I think we're, we're somewhere between seventeen and a half and fifteen right now, right, Mark? And
Yeah.
So we just need, do we, do we vote on that now? Or do we, do we get all of the items on the table and look at a, an aggregate?
No, I, I'm okay with going, I mean, that, that, I, I think Mr. Dan said the same thing is, is, is let's see what the rest of it looks like because they're gonna feel more amenable uh, with what they hear or not. So, uh, but, but I just don't want to come back and go all over this from the beginning because it sounds to me like from the date of the permit is when, when the clock starts. And uh, you know, it extended only by the, uh, any period of appeals. And I think the, the wording was there in the last opinion, in the last decision. And it sounds to me like both parties can live with that. So when we come back to this, we're just gonna be talking about what that number is. Fifteen, seventeen, whatever it is.
I believe that's where we are. Yep.
Okay, good.
Um, okay, so we'll, we'll table this for now and we'll just keep moving through.
There's a lot of language in here about uh, buildings permits and expiry and six months after issuance of the building permit. Like, I mean, I'm okay with what's here, but this, a lot of this is sort of follows the normal process, right? A completed building is a completed building. Got it. A permitted building, you know, there's this six-month period after issuance of a building permit. I, like, I don't want to get in the building inspector's way here, right? Code. I mean, I'm okay with the language, but Alec, I guess I'll look to you if this.
Um, yeah, I, I, Madam Chair person, if I could, um, it, I would agree with some of the sentiment that Rich is, is sharing here. So I, Adam, maybe you can weigh in on this, but I get very weary of, of a planning board um, interjecting itself in the building officials' process. If a building official were to choose mid-construction to pull a building permit, that has to be for very specific reasons under their sole discretion. And so I, I do get, I do get conscientious here and not that this applicant would ever engage in this activity. Sure, there are cases where people have pulled building permits, slow rolled them, taken very little action, and a building official has chosen to, to revoke a building permit after a reasonable period of time. But I become hesitant to, to place such language in a, a planning board decision when we don't even know how the building officials' decisions fifteen years from now could shape what this looks like now. Um, Adam, I'd look for you to weigh in on it, but my interpretation is I would, I would refrain from including any language regarding the building permit and its administration in this decision.
So through you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, I don't disagree with anything that Alec has said, um, in, in terms of what's within the planning board's purview versus what is typically and traditionally within um, the purview of the building official. Um, having said that, I, I don't know that that was necessarily the intention of these provisions that are on the screen. Um, and again, I don't, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of the history of these provisions. I think that these are provisions that are mirroring language in earlier, earlier um, uh, versions of the special permit, the original or the two subsequent modifications. And so I think the uh, the intent was probably, and again, it's nothing more than a guess on my part, but just sort of reading between the lines and maybe Johanna has some, some, some firsthand knowledge, but I, uh, uh, my sense is that the objective here is to um, be very clear about when rights have vested and when rights haven't vested with respect to the lapse of this permit. Because the preceding provisions are talking about the lapse of the permit and when the rights no longer exist. And so I think there was some concern that, well, are you saying that if we've obtained a building permit uh, or even a foundation permit and we're under construction? And then the, the anniversary date hits, we have to drop the shovels and the hammers and the, and, and we have to leave a partly constructed building, partly constructed inevitably and till we can get an extension. And if God, you know, God forbid, we don't get the extension, then we have a partially finished building, which would be, you know, an economic disaster for them and probably not what the board would want to see either, a half-finished building. Um, but I think that that's what I read here. This was an attempt to try to um, resolve when rights have, you know, to, to quote this, uh, sub-item A, uh, fully and irrevocably vested with respect to the special permit. And when they haven't vested and when an extension would be required because the master permit has lapsed and is of no further force or effect unless there's an extension granted. So I think that that's the objective here. Maybe it could be more simply stated without um, you know, referring to um, the, the building inspector. But again, I think it was more of a passing reference to the building inspector, only in the context that once he's issued a building permit, the rights have vested. And if he hasn't yet issued a, a building permit and the anniversary date um, hits, then the, the rights have lapsed.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, Johanna, your hand's up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Adam, I have no additional history on this. Uh, but this was language that was in the prior permits and I read them language exactly as you do, which is that it really is to establish that if you're sort of midstream on a building at the time that, you know, the commercial development period lapses or expires, you can keep on going. Um, if you haven't started anything yet, then you know, you can ask the board to extend the permit, but basically, once the permit's over and you've not done something on a particular lot or with respect to a particular building, you know, you're out of time.
Thank you, Johanna. Um, Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I don't have too much problem keeping this language, although it would be nice to make it simpler, but I, I do have a concern what, um, I think what happened with Cisco Building was that two foundations were installed. Um, and, you know, I want to make sure that we're not, we don't then leave the permit open indefinitely because two foundations were installed. So I, I just want to make sure that this language at least covers that scenario that, you know, those foundations um, were then, you know, allowed to grow grass over and uh, weren't used, but the permit did expire. So I just want to make sure um, again, maybe this language can be made simpler by our attorney and also that it covers that eventuality that even if a foundation is put in, it doesn't mean the building permit stays open, you know, indefinitely. So.
Yeah, and I read Cindy, the, the um, "In such construction shall be pursued in good faith continuously to completion so far as reasonably practical under the circumstances." I read that as the good, you know, the effort to continue on, not to just stop.
Attorney Costa, please.
And I, I think that um, Rich and Cindy, I think that that may be where um, where I would go back to what Alec started off with, which is, you know, that, that phrasing, that uh, shall be pursued in good faith continuously to completion. That's directly from the Massachusetts State Building Code, or at least the version of the code that was in effect um, a number of years ago. I don't know honestly if the tenth edition has that same lan- language any longer, but it was in a number of earlier additions of the code um, in connection with the six-month lapse period for a building permit. So I, I think that that's where we have to, we have to defer to a certain extent to the building official to do his or her job and ensure that if a building permit issues and six months pass and the, the, the work is not uh, continuing expeditiously uh, toward completion, uh, that that building permit is, is uh, allowed to lapse, is, is rescinded, is pulled. Um, but certainly I think that we can include some language in the decision, maybe a simplified version of what's here to make it very clear that that is the intent of the board. Uh, that applicant, the, the applicant, again, not saying that this applicant would, um, but the intent is that the applicant wouldn't circumvent the commercial development period by artificially extending it through the installation of a foundation that is allowed to sit for seven or eight or nine years before any meaningful construction gets underway.
Thank you, Adam.
So can we put a note in there to that effect and then move on with the intent to get that language clarified? Next, next go round.
Yeah, I think if, like, my vote would be we conceptually think we're, I don't know if we're aligned. I mean, I'm thinking that, hey, this is really a, like, we don't want this to become a tool for like, building a bunch of foundations and then everything kind of stops. But it, at the same time, we need to give the building inspector the ability to execute the state building code, right? So I, maybe it is just a little attorney cleanup. Um, after this.
Right, I just want to make sure the concern that the foundation doesn't make, being allowed to keep the foundation maintains the permit indefinitely. I, I think, I'm not sure if I, this language tells me that. It talks about the building code. But once the building permit lapses, is that what it's saying after six months? And then you, the, the building permit would lapse if they're not pursuing it in good faith? Is that what this is stating? I can't quite parse it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Adam.
So, so I think that was probably the intent of this language. And again, I'm just guessing because I wasn't involved in the crafting of the language, but again, that, that, that phrase that I see, that, that sentence or portion of the sentence that says that uh, that the construction shall be commenced within six months after issuance of the building permit uh, and shall be pursued in good faith continuously to completion. That's language that's found or was found in the Massachusetts State Building Code uh, in uh, in, in describing how it is that one can avoid a lapse of a building permit. When a building permit issues, you've got to not only commence construction under the permit within six months, but you have to continue that construction in good faith continuously to completion as far as reasonably practical to avoid a circumstance where your building permit would be deemed to have lapsed and you would need to reapply for a building permit. And so I think that that's where that language comes from. But I, I think that there's a way, w- without necessarily quoting the building code or uh, stepping out of our lane, so to speak. I think that there's probably a way to capture in this um, in this decision and, and, and with substitute language in this Roman numeral five, uh, the intent of the board, which is to ensure that that commercial development period is not artificially extended by uh, an applicant, as you say, pulling, pulling a foundation permit, installing a foundation uh, and then making no meaningful progress for some extended period of time.
Yep.
Thanks, Adam. Okay, so Adam's gonna massage this around just a bit, it sounds like, right? Any other comments on the rest of this section?
Um, just number C was, you know, at what point um, do they request the extent, if they request an extent in the commercial development period, how far out? Um, you know, I suggest in six months or maybe something even further. Um, I don't know what's typical, but I just thought there should be a time frame associated with that.
That makes sense. Um, Adam, Johanna, either of you have a recommendation for that?
So, um, Madam Chair, I, I, I guess I would say you, you're, you're talking about when an application, application would be made, how far in advance of the expiration of the commercial development period?
Um, this is for a, maybe I'm in the wrong section. This is a, a request to extend the commercial development period.
Right. And, and, and so your question is uh, requiring the applicant to make that request a certain number of days or weeks or months prior to the expiration?
Yes.
Why would we tie the hands of the board? It's at the board's option.
I just wonder if, if Cindy, what you are looking for here is just, you know, prior to the expiration of the, you know, that the request for extension has to be made prior to the expiration of the or the termination of the commercial development period.
Right, and, and presumably, um, you know, there'd need to be some time for the board to consider that before the the permit actually expires. Uh, uh, you know, it's more a logistical thing, but it seems that there ought to be a, a time if, if uh, I, I think that makes sense to put in a, a, a.
I think it, I think it may be very hard to predict and, and again, would sort of tie the board's hands if you're trying to build in, you know, a certain amount of time. Um, I know that in lots of other jurisdictions, as long as you apply for the extension before the permit lapses, um, you're good. Um, so I would just sort of suggest that rather than, you know, prescribing the amount of time the board has to act on it.
Yeah, that's great. Like, if you, if you, you know, make it clear that your intent is to extend, then discussion can happen and conditions and what have you, but that that shouldn't, that shouldn't be a timer that has to be satisfied for. Uh, so yeah, as long as the uh, the intent for the extension is there before, before it ends, that's, that's perfectly fine.
It could be after too, couldn't it? Like, let's say that it could last. And then there was a, oh, we have this project. Boy, we'd really like to extend it for a year, even though it's lapsed. Like I,
I don't see us saying no to that. Yeah.
I think we have, we haven't said no to that. We, we've actually done it.
Explicitly done it. Yeah, so it's, so I don't think we necessarily need that language at all.
Um, okay, I'm just thinking about, let, let's, a scenario where the butters are being, um, you know, there's a lot of construction traffic and the butters are, are continuing to have concerns. Um, and then the last day that the permit was supposed to lapse, the applicant comes in and asks for. and asks for an extension. I mean, I guess the board would can take that current consideration, but I'm just, I'm just trying to think it through here. You know, it doesn't seem to make sense that you would ask for it on the very last day. But I don't know, does legal counsel have a, a thought about that?
I, I, I do. I mean, I, I will tell you, just to be candid, my experience is the same as that of Attorney Snyder, that the, the advice I've consistently given to the boards I represent is if an application is made prior to the date of expiration of a special permit, then they've got it under the wire and they've requested an extension in advance of the expiration of the permit. Some boards, as it sounds like your board maybe has done in the past, have been willing to even retroactively extend permits in instances where applications are made after the date of expiration of a permit. In those circumstances, we often have the discussion, is this a modification or an extension? Is this really a new application? At the end of the day, it's six of one, half dozen of the other because the standards are the same. The law doesn't differentiate, Chapter 48, Section 9 doesn't differentiate between new special permit applications and modifications or amendments. The standards apply equally to both. What I would say to, to your point, Cindy, and maybe provides you with some assurance in that, in that scenario you just described with neighbors or abutters who are concerned with ongoing construction traffic, if an applicant chooses to wait until the day before its permit expires to make an application to extend that permit, which of course is not going to be heard that same day, it's going to be heard a number of weeks later when the matter can come before the, the board, that permit is not automatically extended in the interim because they've made an application for the extension. So they're really shooting themselves in the foot by making a late application. Because if they've got a project that's underway and they're continuing work, they're mid-construction, they're not supposed to be out there constructing two days, three days, four days later. If they've only applied for an extension a day before the expiration and they're not scheduled for a hearing for three, four, or five more weeks, they're supposed to stop work in the interim because there's no guarantee they're going to get that extension. So a wise applicant, if it's a project or, or a series of projects that are underway, is going to make an application a number of months in advance.
Yeah, I'm fine with dropping that, that timeframe. I was just trying to envision a scenario, we might want it, but it sounds like that's not common practice. So I'm okay with, with dropping it. But I guess we have no ability, plenty of boards have no ability to enforce. So if construction goes on beyond the time of the permit and we don't know about it, you know, if it's the building inspector or somebody who's supposed to be out there. But, you know, we do have concerns about that type of enforcement. So I was just trying to protect against that type of scenario happening. But if, if the attorneys don't, you know, Adam doesn't think it's an important point, then I'm willing to move on.
All right. Thank you. Do we want to strike that then, Alex?
Just delete the comment? Or respond to it?
Is it to be edited by Attorney Costa or is it just being left as it is?
I think it can be left as is.
Thank you. All right, moving on into decision.
Give me real quick, Madam Chairperson, your version of the decision had...
A whole file of stuff, yep.
Yeah, a few comments of the forward and, and as did, as did member Gisardi. So I just need to import those all over. I'm gonna do that right here at the start, page 16.
Hey, I kind of reorganized these. I don't know how you want to do this. If we want to go through the ones we have written or we want to talk about the ones that people are requesting. Because these are all, I just put them up here personally because it was just added conditions that I, I saw, that I'd like to see. And I kind of reorganized it a little bit in my own notes here in front of me. So I can dig into those if that makes sense. They will correlate to what we're seeing on here in some form or another. I just, I've reorganized it a little bit. Is it okay to just jump into these new ones? Additional items, everybody? Or do you want to go through this in a different way? Do you want to go through these first?
I, I mean, if you have items, Rebecca, let's, let's do it.
Okay. All right. So the first thing, I know it's maybe not correlating to, yeah, I guess it kind of is. So I'd like to see a condition for a maximum height of 35 feet placed on the buildings on Lot 800. That's the ones closest to Harbor Bridge. I know that, so I was looking at the document, and I'm going to pull it up here, that was provided in the response letter from the applicant to some of my comments. And I, you know, looking at the maps that, that were shared with us, I think that there is actually, you know, it was in response to my comment about the, the buildings being at the same level. I've gone back and referenced those, those documents that were shared with us. And I do think that there's an error in the, the comment that it's 355 plus 355 in elevation at the 100-foot setback. It's, it's actually, according to the topography, it's 365. So I was correct in, in stating that those buildings are going to be at the same level unless there's a plan to, you know, I don't even know how you would do that. You can't cut that much still off the back of the, the building. So it is, they're going to be eye to eye. So actually, I think it's, let's see, the proposed building, the proposed building has a potential to be higher than the neighboring units. And I think it might be easier if we just look at this, maybe. Alec, do you have access to the, the letter response to my comments? Do, it was the meeting at the last?
So for reference, this is jumping back to our October 6th meeting, I believe.
Was it October 6?
The letter is dated October 27.
So that it'll be, yep, in your October 30th item.
Yeah.
Campanelli follow-up letter to our Burner comments.
Yep.
And bear with me.
And if you could go to page 5. I'm sorry, it's 5 in the document. Keep going down. It's the first, yeah, this one. If you look at the 100-year, 100 rear setback, there's a 265 coming through there, that line, if you will. I don't, I can't make it move here. Yeah, that's 265. 255 is up towards the front of the lot. So at 265, you know, we have a house, a building proposed, you know, if you go to the next one, it says 255. If you go to the next sheet, it says 255 at the, at the 100-foot setback. So right there, that, this is mislabeled by 10 feet. So this whole building structure potentially goes up another 10 feet here. And so it does go and, and becomes higher than the, the building, you know, facade of the, the neighboring building. So this is why I'm saying I, I have a concern about that. I think that this is not the same project that it was originally approved. Now we have neighbors and I'm very, you know, I feel for these guys going to be looking into this building, might need to them. Let me just go back to my note here. So the top of that building, so potentially, potentially if it gets built out to the 45, it would be, it's 310 versus the reflected 301 eye level at the top of the residential unit. So there's my concern about lowering that building. Russ, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Could you go back one slide to the site plan, Alex, please? I just want to walk through this. So, so if you see the 255 line, it's just to the left of the words that say septic discharge area. So of course, the front of the building will be to the left of that dash line. And the grade between Beaver Brook Road and the front of the proposed building would be at 255. Alex, could you kindly scroll back down to the building section? So on the right-hand side of this building, we're showing a 255 elevation. That would be the planned elevation of the first floor of the building, which then would be consistent as it moves towards the rear of the site. Now, these buildings will all be designed, as Johanna has said previously, and built to suit. We don't know if these depths will be less than this or, or these depths. But what we do know is that it will be 255 at the back. It won't be 265. So the building will be either built into the grade, and we've done this before, we've used the rear of the building as a, as a retaining wall, or there will be a small retaining wall between the building and the setback. So a retaining wall is considered a structure, and we're proposing a 100-foot rear setback, which nothing, no structure could go into that 100 foot. So you see, there's a small grading area that is shown by that wiggly line. It says grading area to, an elevation 255 at the rear of the building. So that is correct. And if, if a building was built to the maximum allowed by the current zoning bylaw, which is 45, it would be at 300. And the slope from 255 goes up to about 275 to 277 at the basements of the townhomes to the left, and then it rises to 282 and...
Is that just Russ?
Yep. That was on my intel.
But I understand what he's saying. The 255 is at the front.
Yeah.
That's the elevation through the back.
That's where the front door is and they'll keep it level. And yes, they can cut it.
I understand what he's talking about. But it's, what we're showing is impacting the slope, right? So we're impacting the vegetation. So what is shown in this graphic is going to be impacting the slope and the planting material that's already out there and existing. If they have to change this, the grade of this slope, then they need to cut down trees, right? Because otherwise it would be 10 feet higher than what they're showing. So we either show the proposal with a wall or we show a proposal with, you know, grading this, this building into the, into the grade. But I, I'm very, very sure that I do not want to see that vegetated buffer impacted out there.
Is that a site plan issue, Rebecca?
That's what I was raising my hand for. Like, I, I'm pretty sure this is explicitly within the purview of site plan.
Perhaps it is. But if we go forward with this as it is, you know, it's now an allowable thing if we change the grade. So I'm, I'm pointing out an issue. And I, I just want him to address it. Johanna, have you been able to see if he's having difficulties or?
He's having difficulty. He's trying to log on right now.
Okay, terrific.
So the question, Rebecca, is the dimensional height for this building. You're, you're asking it to be 30 or 35 feet? Is that right?
I am, yep. And, and, you know, just going into some of our bylaws, you know, the purpose of 7.5.1, the bylaw is set forth to protect the value of real property, to promote more sensitive sightings of buildings and overall site planning, to perpetuate the appearance of Boxborough's traditional New England landscape, to allow landowners a reasonable return on their investments. And I guess in this case, I would say that would be, you know, our neighboring parcel here. So I'm questioning that. 7.5.6, the proposed buildings need to be designed with harmony into the natural features of the site. The site plan, to best extent possible, needs to preserve the topography, views, vistas, wildlife habitat, et cetera. And, let's see. Protecting natural features is also an open space design standard here. And so not adversely impacting or abutting properties. And I do feel that if this is as high as it might be, it will be impacting the neighboring parcel there, affecting that.
So I think the, the point you originally brought this, or just now brought up with this, was that if it's, if the 45 foot started at 265, then it could be basically, you know, whoever's on the top floor could, could see it, could be eye level. That isn't the case as drawn, because the actual, because the front of the building would be at 255 and they would keep it level. So at, at 45 feet, it still would be, it would be below the sightline.
I absolutely understand that, Chris, but that's not what I'm saying right now. So that's why, Russ, I'm seeing you coming back on.
He's trying, yeah.
Can Russ be unmuted?
Russell should be able to unmute himself. Yes, I've applied him as co-host, but let me see.
Hi, Russ, welcome back.
Yeah, sorry about that. I would have put a bad timing to lose the connection. Sorry.
No worries at all. So I guess if this was to stay at 255, and you're going to dig this building in a little bit at the back, or do a retaining wall, I guess my big concern at this point is that what is proposed here in this elevation is actually regrading the slope between the house, the, the buildings, the residences, and, and this new structure. It doesn't show a retaining wall or burying this building 10 feet in the back. So with a regrading that looks like it's being proposed here, you're going to be impacting the plant material on this slope as, as shown. So I guess some kind of commitment, I guess, to the fact that we would keep this down at 255 and/or bury it, you know, 10 feet in the back. So it's not going to exceed the height of, what is it, 300 feet elevation? And we're not going to impact that vegetated buffer behind.
Yeah, if I understand your comments, our, our goal here is to leave the 100-foot buffer untouched. There would be no manipulation of contours, no removal of vegetation. And as, as everyone experienced on a site visit, that that's a pretty heavily buffered area. And you can see there's, there needs to be some additional space to create the correct grading that would need to happen. There needs to be fire and life safety access around all four sides of the building. We do not need truck access, but we do need an apron for, for firefighters to get around the back of a building conveniently. They just need to get to three sides, which we've met with the fire department, and they're completely content with the access. They just need to have personnel be able to travel along the back, and we would do that. But the issue here is the existing vegetation is dense and we're proposing a no-touch zone for that buffer.
Right. But you're not showing that here. This is showing an impact to the buffer.
Right. So, so Alec, could you go back to the slide before this? Right, so, so Alec, could you go back to the slide before this again? And, and I know I took this grading plan off the town website. If, if you've, if you go to the line that says, with your cursor, please, it says one-hundred rear setback proposed, that dash line, that's the two-sixty-five line there. And as you can see, it swings way off to the right as it comes right there. So there's a portion of this site that the two-sixty-five line is in the setback, which would mean that the grade would be even less, right around where the word setback is, it's probably about two-sixty-two, two-sixty-three. And then the two-sixty-five line really wanders over to the right-hand side quite a bit. So this is just a snapshot of a portion of lot eight-hundred. Um, and again, we don't know the size of the building, and I think this is one of these situations that site plan approval is being reserved to look at the condition of the buffer. Maybe the building had, never goes as close to the hundred-foot buffer, because the, the user doesn't need that large of the building. Um, and that would be great for all parties, but, but we do have to, you know, set a no-touch zone, which we're happy with the one-hundred-foot no-touch zone. And the grade, the grade varies over the, over the portion of the site.
Well, um, I guess I would want to guarantee that we're not going to exceed the three-hundred feet elevation per your sketch. Um, and I would like to say, like, identify that this one-hundred-foot setback is a no-touch zone at all. I guess those two things would get me over the um, the height difference here, the restriction here.
Yeah, and, and I, I totally respect your comments, and I can, um, we've, we've talked with our civil engineers to talk about the appropriate grade of the front of the building. And we landed at two-fifty-five, um, with the zoning height limit at forty-five, that does put us at a restriction of three-hundred feet. So I, I can agree with your comment and agree with that as a stipulation to this decision. Um, so I have no problem with that. And then as far as the one-hundred-foot rear setback piece, I'm very happy to add the words, which hasn't been spoken up until this evening, as that being a one-hundred-foot no-touch zone. And, um, that, that I'm completely content with as well.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Um, so someplace in our, if you want to go back to our decision, um, Alec, um, we'd need to identify those two items in the decision.
Can I ask? Sorry, sorry, Rebecca, um, yeah, so I don't know, are we going to reference exhibit, what they've called Exhibit A? We may have to rename it and work off of that, because that had a bunch of proposed dimensional requirements, um, which I think we should be going through, with many of them are the same as what was already there, but this is one of those items. I think there's only a couple maybe that we needed to discuss, but should we work off that table, or do you want to work it out, just work off the conditions? I think we should look at the table. Exhibit, Attachment A, I guess, is referred to here. Can we bring that up?
Just a second, um, applicant offers forty-five foot, um, maximum building height, not to, to exceed elevation three-hundred per that, that topography map, I would say. Just in case it's actually three-hundred-and-one, because the topography is a little bit different than that map says, you know what I mean? It, then it should be allowed, maybe to, I don't know, to have a tiny amount of, uh, I just want to have a reference point, does that make sense?
I'm fine with that, Rebecca, no problem whatsoever.
Because then that has a reference to the neighboring parcel as well. So I would reference both of the, um, those two documents we just reviewed, Alec.
So I've named it both by the, the map itself or the graphic that was drawn, but we will specifically reference the exhibit number for this follow-up letter.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Russ, for walking through that. Um, uh, Cindy, sorry, you wanted to go and reference something else, or?
Well, Attachment A is the table they provided with the dimensional requirements or proposed dimensional requirements. So I didn't know if you wanted to update that table to reflect this language also, or?
Um, sorry, Cindy, to cut you off there, I just want to make sure I'm jumping to the right one. Is it, is it Attachment A within one of their PowerPoint presentations, or is it a standalone document?
Um. It might have been in their PowerPoint, I think it's a, again, it's a zoning table, dimensional table they provided. They, it, it's received the left there, it says, has set forth an Attachment A, so I think we should be bringing it back.
Uh, there we go, uh, it is a standalone document currently, uh, Exhibit ZB. Uh, I'm gonna open that up, um, and pull it up on screen.
Right, that's the one. So do you want to add notes to this attachment that match that language that you just discussed?
It could be a good call, here with you in a second. Sorry, in there. I think this already reflects that. Maximum or minimum rear setback at lot eight-hundred, one-hundred feet, maximum building height across the park, forty-five feet.
It does, but I think Russ wanted to note that it would be a no-touch zone, you know, just this is gonna be an actual exhibit, I just want to make sure it's consistent with whatever is agreed upon.
Russ, you had a, a comment?
Yeah, Alec, the way, um, this has been handled in other situations is put a footnote, for example, where it says minimum rear setback at lot eight-hundred, it says one-hundred. If you put a footnote one, and then below the table, you might say one refers to one-hundred foot being a no-touch zone for existing grading and vegetation. And then the other item that Rebecca commented on is the maximum building height, which is forty-five. Perhaps after the forty-five feet, that has, um, the footnote number two. And footnote number two might say a maximum height of forty-five or maximum elevation of three-hundred feet will be the, um, maximum allowed at the, at lot eight-hundred. Um, so it might be easier to handle it that way, and I just did help you out.
Great. Thank you. Uh, another, um, item that I had was, um, getting a condition that preserves the areas located behind the house, um, the buildings, um, as natural grassland or woodland corridor. Um, I'm hearing now that we need, um, a retaining wall potentially, or grading into the, 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 um, the, uh, up against the building, I guess. So, um, I would love to see additional woodland for any area that we could have behind the, the buildings. Um, and the purpose of this would be, you know, um, seven-point-five-point-one says encourage preservation of open land for scenic beauty, open space, forested, and recreational uses to, um, to provide the natural environment, to protect the real estate value, um, traditional New England landscape, um, and allowing landowners a reasonable return on their investment. Um, preservation of views, vistas, wildlife habitat is also listed within that. Um, go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, isn't, um, can we just reference that site plan review will, will stress these, you know, these areas of importance, rather than rewriting the whole, the whole thing in here?
I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that, that's why I bring it up. Okay, so any of my comments are because I'm not comfortable with what we have currently in, in front of us. Um, so I'm tossing this out there.
What do we have in front of us, maybe that, back to that map? Um, I actually pulled it up, my, is that whole area behind those three buildings? It's a hundred, like, what does that look like in the end? Is that a, um, that's a hundred-foot no-touch zone? Does that effectively become a corridor? I'm just trying to understand, I.
You know, a hundred feet, I think, passes the woods and gets into the, the grassland bit a bit, right? I wasn't, I wasn't there during the, um, the site visit, but I've been there a lot.
It's hard to tell.
Russ, go ahead.
Thank you, um. John Rockwood, um, included this in, in the, at least two, perhaps three times when he talked in previous hearings, um. The majority of the now rephrased one-hundred-foot no-touch zone is a woodland, natural wildlife corridor, and will be used extensively. Um, the grassland piece is being, um, restored on lot seventeen. And we'll be working with natural, um, heritage to create a, uh, a birdland habitat there, um, replacing, uh, any, um, alleged birdland habitat from lot eight-hundred. So certainly, um, and John, John also mentioned that birdland habitats are not wildlife corridors, because predators from above, um, come down, um, and, and poach off animals on land, and all animals move through the woods for protection from, from anything above. But I'm just indicating what he made statements about in his presentation. So I'm not really sure, I think you're asking for a larger buffer than one-hundred feet, is that what I'm understanding here?
I'm asking for, um, not a lawn treatment, so, um, something that is more, um, wild than just, um, adding more green lawn in the back of this, this property.
Oh, okay, I, I, I would agree with you, we would want anything, certainly anything on the sides or in the back, um, can be something that could be taken up in site plan approval, um, with a landscape architect and a landscape peer review, for something that would be of a material more native to, um, what you're trying to do here is trying to provide, um, really native grasses that are there today, and I, I wouldn't disagree with that at all.
Um, so I have made, um, so that, that might go back into the sustainability, um, issues that I'm gonna discuss in a little bit, um, so maybe we can revisit, um, this at that point, because I have a few comments about that. I'm just making a note, so I don't forget. Um, okay, um. I lost my place, sorry about that. Okay, um. Have we discussed any limitations on hours of operation? Or has it just been deferred to site plan?
Um, I don't, I don't recall, I'd have to rely, I'd have to allow the other board members to remember, but I do, just as a landlord, we don't restrict via our leases, hours of operation of the buildings. We, we have quiet uses, um, we have, sometimes in an R and D facility, we have some, um, procedures that are being babysat overnight. Um, we went through this in the T U V proposal, um. These aren't, these, these aren't trucking maneuvers, these aren't a distribution center. These are R and D facilities that occasionally, they are, um, with a, with a skeleton staff, and that would really it would really be a barrier for creating a good business commerce if we, if we placed hours of operation on the building.
My concern is, is mostly about eight-hundred versus, you know, next to this, um, residential use. Um, you know, just those, those, like, big windows and stuff that we might have on the side could be really bright, um, through the night, so. Um.
Well, I think, I think we might have had a conversation on this, we, we, um, fairly certainly agreed to no windows on the back of the building.
Got it, okay, um, I'm not sure I recall seeing that elevation, um, did we receive an elevation that?
We don't, we haven't designed the building yet, that would be site plan review.
Okay, is it something that you'd feel comfortable with, um, writing into the decision about, um, uh, not having windows on the back?
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable with it, and maybe, maybe what we could say, we, I, I mean, there's, we're we're gonna need skylights, and that's a building code item now, okay? Um, because natural daylighting is required as part of a sustainability piece. Um, and, uh, you know, I can't, I can't control that building code element. Um, so, but, but I, I would strive, the intent would be for no windows to be on the back of the building, um, but let's take it up in site plan review. They could be filtered, they could be shadowed, they could be tinted, they could be mirrored, if they had to be there, but I don't have any reason. There's no windows in the back of T U V, and that's been our, our sort of test tube as to a, 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 a nice user for this park, a nice, quiet, sustainable user.
Okay, got it, um, let's see. Uh, soundproofing screening of rooftop equipment was another, um, comment that I had.
Yep, and then we, um, had no problem with that during site plan approval. The, um, the office buildings have larger, um, rooftop equipment that Cisco built, and they have, um, pent, not penthouse, they have, um, rooftop equipment screens. Um, T U V has a slight, we went with a slightly different strategy there, it's all heat pump technology and electric, uh, energy recovery units. Those units are a little bit smaller than the large air handling pieces, um, as you drive through the park and get up and down Beaverbrook Road or through any of the parking lots. You can't see any rooftop equipment at T U V, because they were positioned in a strategic way that they couldn't be seen. And the parapet wall of T U V is actually higher than the roof. So the wall actually screens the views to the equipment as well. So, so that's essentially a, a site plan approval thing, but the answer, the issue is, we did a sound, um, study that got peer reviewed with T U V, and in certainly site lines, the rooftop equipment and noise would be reviewed as site plan review.
So is that, uh, we're not willing to, to do that right now, or look, or consider anything for that at this point? You're deferring.
No, I thought I just agreed to it, but, but I don't, not designing a building.
Me, because I'm like struggling with a, a nice little Thanksgiving gift of a cold, so if I didn't, if I didn't understand you correctly. If I didn't, if I didn't understand you correctly, I apologize for that, Russ. Um.
You know, that's okay. I, I think we were saying we're on the same page and we did, we've already have an example in the park and. It would come up in site plan review and the sound would get peer reviewed by the, by your um places folks like it did previously.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, again, I apologize if I missed what you were saying. Um. Okay, thank you, Alec. Um, one thing that is kind of a boilerplate for us is um, and we did this for T U V. Um, but um banning the use of chemical pesticides, fertilizers and rodenticides and. And just um generally just trying to do carbon neutral practices. So um, this was something I did go back and look at for TV we. We incorporated, um, so I'd like to. Kind of put this boilerplate into this um decision as well.
Yep, no, no objection there.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I apologize, I know there are other members of the board who also have their hands up and I don't mean to preempt them. But I think that, you know, the difference with the T U V decision and this decision is that this is just for master plan. T U V, we had an end user identified, we had a building designed. So it was really easy to talk about, you know, carbon neutral practices and screening and buffering and soundproofing. Um. You know, and what was and wasn't doable from the standpoint of, you know, what kind of fertilizers or rodenticides would be used. I think it's really difficult at the master plan stage where we are right now to be talking about those things because we don't. Have anything specific to put in front of the board. So I would respectfully suggest that these are all very valid items for discussion, just not in the context of this decision. But rather when we're back with specific users and projects um for the board to really do a deep dive into.
Thank you, Shawna. Um, Chris, your hands up.
I mean, that was, that was essentially my, my comment, that a, a lot of these details are. Absolutely appropriate for site plan review, but since we don't have particular building to discuss right now. It, it feels weird to review a theoretical plan that hasn't. I mean, they've definitely shown, um, the applicant has shown. Extreme willingness to be very flexible and and reasonable with all the, all the requests that we've had to date. So I, I. I think I can trust that, that pattern will continue. So I think, I think we can rely on ourselves, well. Presumably ourselves uh to, you know, handle, handle those details in site plan review if and when we get to that point. Uh, for, for this, for the master plan, I, I don't think we need to, need to do this yet.
Thanks, Chris. Um, my goal is to hopefully get Russ to a yes right now, so um I just. I appreciate the fact that he's willing to talk to these things with me right now, so. Um, uh, sustainable practice is really my last um thing, and there's a couple of things that you um, Campanelli has already um. Committed to, which is fantastic. Um, and one, I just want to make sure that these got captured in here. Um, one was um, and I'm gonna read this, hopefully I copied it correctly, but all new created. Um, all newly created public parking spaces, five on lot six hundred and five on lot seven hundred. Once development is realized, will be constructed of grasscrete with one of them. And these can be copied out of the letter um that Campanelli presented to, in response to my, my comments. If that's easier for you. Or I can.
The only thing, I, I, this is not to you, Rebecca. The way you said it is correct. I think um, I think Alex is doing the typing. I think what we committed to was the visitor spaces, the five visitor spaces, not all new spaces out of grasscrete. And you, you referenced the five spaces, five on lot six hundred and five on um lot seven hundred. And that, that is correct. We, we're committed to the grasscrete there. And, you know, there may be, you know, site plan review for other parking issues, but yeah.
You might wanna identify just per their note, like what um, you know, where they said that five on lot six hundred and five on seven hundred, just so they're. Only obligated to what um. They wanted to be obligated to on that? And again, I got that from the letter response.
And there is a condition later in the decision that discusses the provision of those total of ten public parking spaces on lots six hundred and seven hundred. That might be the appropriate place to just throw in that those um spaces will be grasscrete.
Yeah, I certainly did not order these in any way, shape or form. Leave that to the, the um better paid folks out there. Um, the other um commitment was that all tenants will be required to submit uh T uh D M similar to, to T U V, which um. May include van and shared transportation methods as appropriate for the end users' operations. All tenants, oh, sorry. Van and shared, yeah. Alec, you'll go back and get their, their real verbiage for this, I'm assuming.
Yes, just to confirm, did this one come off the same letter from October?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then um, lastly, and I'm noting that it's ten nineteen, I said ten o'clock, but I just want to push through. My last couple of comments here. Um. We heard actually at the beginning of our meeting, um, just. The sustainable goals of our community. Um, and so I am asking for some kind of a commitment to um, you know, helping us. Joining us to, to um, you know, make a sustainable um effort towards new development. I feel like. Uh, two thousand twenty-five is just the responsible thing for developers to be doing. And it's definitely a very important thing to the town um of Boxborough um to, to have green growth and and sustainable practices, so. Um, I'm looking to you, Russ, to see if you would be willing to, to put some wording into this um document that, that you are committed to. Um, some kind of green development out here on this project.
Um, we certainly are committed to sustainable principles and um, you know, energy saving. Um, heating systems in which we've, which we've exhibited in the construction of T U V in multiple ways. Um. I'm just not so sure how to do it because the technology changes so quickly that. Even some of the things that we've put in T U V in two thousand and twenty-two, moving into two thousand twenty-six. Are already, there's new technologies that are providing even better energy efficiency than that building. Um, so I don't want to put any specifications in there, but. Because I'm looking at, you know, some of our sustainability um intentions that are listed in Amepha certificate and. And I'm just reading through this and some of that is already a little bit tired because the sustainability technologies is advancing at a quick rate. But the quick answer is our best practices and what we do here at Campanelli and deal in Boxborough is very much that, and we've, we've been committed to saying sustainability. Practices here and we, we will continue to do that through site plan review. With the help of this board and, and others.
Yeah, I understand you can't, um, and, and I totally understand that you can't like obligate yourself to technology that might come down the road in ten, fifteen years, so. Um, I wonder if we could, um, you know, susto- um, support, suggest supporting the sustainability committee's um sustainability practices or something like that.
How would that be an enforceable um condition though? I mean, how would that be measured for compliance?
Because it's so vague, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that is my.
Um, I'm just trying to get some sort of commitment to uh green development and I'm, I'm not in any state to be able to. Figure out exactly how that is best worded. I guess I just want to make sure that we're doing. Good development, smart development out here.
Right, and as, and as we've said, you know, the very specific features that comprise a sustainable or green development will be before the board as we go through site plan. And you will have the option and the opportunity then to say, we want more of this, less of this, this works, this doesn't work. Again, I just get very nervous about, you know, kind of this aspirational condition that's not really measurable and. I don't know how it would be, you know, how we would judge compliance with it.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from on that, so I guess we need to put our heads together a little bit on that be, uh, you know, speaking from previous experience. Um, we have been in site plan review and um we've requested very similar um items and they have been deferred or not put into play. So that's why I'm trying to capture this a bit earlier, um, so that when we have site plan review, we're actually able to, you know. Get some of this and, you know, get some teeth in it, um, so that we're doing good development and, and um on the next project. Cindy, you're holding your hand.
If I could just comment, I apologize, Rebecca, um.
No, go ahead.
I know, I, I'm not sure if I know what you're having a problems with, but this is where the MIPA document. Because we cross thresholds of development where larger developments are scrutinized by state agencies as well as local agencies. And we're obligated by the MIPA um regulations and Amepha certificate to be um. Hyper focused on sustainable construction practices and energy management techniques where. A smaller building going for a site plan approval in, in any town, Boxborough or, or Acton or Harvard. Will not be because they don't have a MIPA certificate. They haven't crossed those MIPA thresholds. So a lot of what's being put into this. O S C D permit is already in Amepha permit. Um, and that's okay. Um. And, and sometimes you have small projects that don't have a MIPA guideline, so, but we are certainly in our best practices. We are a state of the art. Builder um with state of the art buildings and we're, we're just committed and. I, I, you know, our track record shows it and I look forward to bringing a, a nice, sustainable. Project within reason to um the planning board very soon and be a site plan approval.
Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, well, so Russ touched on, I, I don't know what version we're working off of anymore, but I think in my earlier comments, I had incorporated some of the MIPA. Um, measurable um requirements because, you know, MIPA is actually not a permit, it's an approval. Process that allows you to go obtain permits, so I'm not sure what the applicant's uh obligation to report is. Back to MIPA other than where it says, you know, please provide self certification. So I tried to, to kind of parse through some of the MIPA requirements um. To see where we could potentially put some measurable um conditions on and uh, I mean, I'm just sort of cherry picking my own list here, but. You know, one had to do with air quality, the MIPA process. Um. The applicant uh committed, I believe, to uh reducing their proposed greenhouse gas emissions by three hundred ninety-two tons per year. Um, and then was going to self certify, so my suggested condition there would be that the applicant report. Um, to the planning board when they self certify such reductions. Uh, similarly for uh. Um, let's see, parking, reduce the amount of impervious parking and we can talk a little bit more about, about that. Water conservation measures, the applicant shall employ water conservation efforts as described in the MIPA certificate, including. You know, use of drought tolerant plantings, automated, automatic drip irrigation, installation of low flow plumbing, and I know we usually put those in site plan review, but. This would be a holistic way to sort of pull those items out and apply them to the whole part, you know, the remainder of the park. Um, and I had put those in my earlier draft, so happy to repeat those, but that, that is the kind of measurable thing that I think we could include. Um, you know, in this, under the conditions. Um, and I had some others, but the. You know, if the board wants to go through those, I'm happy to go through them. Uh, when we start bulleting out the rest of the conditions, but I think there are some measurable sustainability things we can apply to this project. That uh, you know, the applicant is really already committed to through the MIPA process. Hello, am I still?
No, I, we can hear you, Cindy. I'm sorry, I'm reading.
Okay.
What Alec is writing here.
All right, I'm not even seeing what he's, what he's writing. Apologies.
So Cindy, I just carried over from what you were describing, that the applicant shall provide a copy of all MIPA self certifications and testing to sustainable practices. And a, and an explanation of how these are being met.
And, yeah, I mean, and this board has time to review all those and, I mean. They're filing them with the applicable state agency, right? I mean.
Well, the only self certification actually is the green, that I noticed is the greenhouse gas um uh inventory, but um. Sorry, again, I'm toggling between multiple documents here. Um. But, you know, uh, things like a reduction of impervious, we haven't really talked about the, you know, the parking, um. You know, the existing per, uh, impervious pavement, perhaps a reduction there, um, some other. Um, items, let's see what else might be measurable, traffic number, traffic trips, you know, we've talked, I think uh Campanelli is gonna go back and review if their um. Traffic study identified a certain amount of traffic trips that I had called out, um, and whether they were able to reduce that amount. Um, I think Rebecca already talked a little bit about more traffic management, those were provided in the MIPA certificate. Um.
But I guess they're doing, like, I, I'm, I'm just, I've lost the bubble and trying to connect. Like, that, that all has to be done as part of their MIPA filing?
Um, so that, yeah.
Are we asking to condition this with that? Or I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we're. I understood what Rebecca said, right?
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the, you know, the green aspiration, I understand the concern. That Attorney Schneider raised about, and if we're saying that, okay, the validation of that is these reports to MIPA, maybe. But like, I don't want to read all their reports to MIPA, like, that's, that's a. Compliance activity.
Right, so, yeah, so the only thing there is, I believe, and I might be wrong, this is the self certification on the greenhouse gas emissions, but. There's also a commitment about water conservation, but there's no reporting going back to, to MIPA, so I tried to pull those commitments into. This as, you know, these as uh, as conditions of approval. Um. Looking through the rest of this. You know, again, I, I had all these conditions in my original draft. Um, I think that might not have made it to this version, but. You know, I thought we were gonna go through a list of conditions at some point. I was gonna just bring them up as, as we uh got there.
I think probably we just jumped into my bulk comments, um, Cindy, that were just up at the top, so we didn't. Roll through the, the, them in order, but um we certainly will move into that after we get through the. Things. Um, so where are we landing on this, I guess? Um, you know, ask for some kind of a commitment here and um, I don't want it to be too subjective per Attorney Schneider's um comments, but I don't want it to be too. Definitive either, just because I, you know, I'm trying to, I, I understand you want to, you know, to design your buildings and you, you're gonna need some flexibility with technology and such, so. Um, is there a way to lightly put this in there that doesn't make Attorney um Schneider feel like we're just, you know, not a way to, to navigate? like we're just, you know, not a way to to navigate it, I guess?
Can we say, I don't know if you were asking me, Rebecca, but I have a thought. Can we can we put the the aspirational, I'll call it that, statement in there, right, in terms of what the expectation is? And that it'll that that specific endeavor will be proposed in the site plan. Right? So you're you're going to measure it in the site plan. I know that, you know, Johanna, you're probably going to say, well, it's still not measurable, but it still has to be, the site plan has to be reviewed and approved, right? I mean, it's it's all kind of fungible until it shows up there. But what we're saying is the expectation is that as, and I'll say it, Russell, just as you did it on T U V, you would bring something period consistent with kind of that approach, right? So so it gets sort of presented, proposed in the site plan. A commitment that then finds its way into a site plan and then the board can either approve or condition the site plan. Approve a condition or deny or approve the site plan. It's always subject to site plan. I don't know, that might be a way to solve it rather than try to have specific reports or metrics put into this.
Thanks.
That gets where you were going, Rebecca.
Yeah, no, I'm just reading through what Alec has just written first to look at. The applicant shall propose sustainability practices in site plan approval, defining measures taken at each proposed building and something like that I would feel comfortable with, but I'm looking to the applicant and Attorney Schneider to.
I think something like that is fine. Good job, Alec.
Rebecca, if I may, I think we did get a request from our sustainability chair that the applicant consider the, oh, I always forget the word, the, not the stretch code, but the next level.
Specialized.
The specialized, I cannot remember that word, specialized code. That could be a commitment the applicant could could make. You know, as as far as building design.
And again, we are absolutely delighted to talk about compliance with the specialized stretch code and any other code and any other sustainability practices when we have actual buildings and have proposed operations and proposed end users. I think, again, and I hate sounding like a broken record, but talking about these things in a vacuum, I don't think is a good use of, you know, time or paper for this decision. You're going to see us again. You're going to have the opportunity to ask these questions, to impose these conditions on actual buildings. Right now, we don't have any actual buildings.
Okay, that was the list of my questions or comments, noting that it's 10:35. We do have other things on our agenda for this evening. I'm willing to give this another 10 minutes and then shift over to the other things in the hope that we can get through that quickly today.
Rebecca, question, is there, it would be great if we could, and I don't know what we can do in 10 minutes. But it would be great if we could, like, what are all, do we have the main issues out on the table? And if not, should we just list them? Because I, you know, and just a suggestion, it might be good, like, I think there's a lot of stuff here. There's probably a lot of staff work and a lot of Adam's time. And maybe bouncing off of Johanna's time, like, there's a lot of work that can happen behind the scenes with what we've got if we can make sure, if we can try to get everything on the table and let let staff do the work. Just a thought.
I was going to say something very similar as, you know, that I would love to see this draft kind of reworked in the next, for the next round. So that we can get, you know, we can look back in the interest of time, look back at what the changes have been and just be well versed in it for the next meeting. I think we have your comments, Rich, and I, Cindy, I'm I'm just kind of gleaning from your your comments earlier that you might have some additional comments. You want to go through all of these decision criteria, correct?
No, I, so we went through the criteria the last time. What I was, my only comment, most of my comments were tied to what we.
Sorry, the conditions.
Yeah, we spent, we spent a fair amount of time, it was in the findings piece before the conditions, I think we spent, unless we're in the conditions. Let me pull up my document, hold on. It, I think we have addressed many of them because it was the, yeah, it was in the decision and we talked about the permit, you know, when do, when does the thing, the construction period begin? So that was addressed. That was in item three, and I think all this language needs to be fixed up to reflect what we talked about in the prior section. So that's already been discussed tonight. The only other thing I had, and I don't know if the applicant has thought about this or whatever, but like, some of these things, it's just, there's no timeframe, right? Like, the applicant should rec, let's not do that one. Let's see which one, oh, the item five. Is that the one? There's like the conveyance of the parcel to the town of Boxborough, there's the conveyance of the deed on the 46 acres to the town of Harvard. There are things here that, and then there's the traffic mitigation. I thought there was a time phasing of that, like at at certain development points. And I've kind of lost, like, it just, do we need to be a little more specific about some of the timing on some of these? That's all. That was my comment, question.
Thanks, Rich. So maybe you can make a note, Alec, that timelines should be addressed kind of typically?
Yeah, and if the applicant has specific thoughts on that, I like, I'm trying to go back to the presentation. I know there was something about like, I thought there was timing on implementing the traffic mitigation measures, there was timing on the speed bumps, like, I thought things sort of cascaded in a in a time order. There's there's no reference to time in these condition and in the decision.
And we're happy to work with Alec and with Adam over the next week or so to suggest timing consistent with what we've proposed to the board in the past.
That'd be great. That'd be that'd be spectacular. Thank you. That was the bulk, that was basically my comment.
Thank you, Rich. Looking to other board members for comments or do, shall we try to scroll through these comments? Or these conditions?
So I, again, I have some comments on the existing conditions and some additional conditions, but which I could send to Alec for the next version, but I don't know, whatever's easiest, I guess.
I probably in the interest of time, if you have a markup of this that you can share with Alec, that would be good to to do, but let's start by scrolling through a few of these conditions. If you have comments.
Okay, I think number one is still, there's a redundant sentence in there, future site plans for any building. It's stated twice in item number one. Looks like it's just duplicated twice. The whole thing.
The whole thing, yep. Madam Chair, if I may make a suggestion, and Cindy, I don't know if you still wanted to go through attachment A, but as I was reading through this draft decision in preparation for our discussion this evening, it occurred to me that it may be useful both for the board and for the developer to include some language, maybe in condition number two, just making clear that, and maybe it's condition one, maybe it's condition two, but basically saying that, you know, the new dimensional requirements apply only to the lots and buildings thereon that are subject to this master plan and that the preexisting buildings are not going to become preexisting nonconforming because they were built in accordance with what was the plan before, if that makes sense.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, please.
I would actually echo this sentiment in part because I would like, as one of the enforcement team members here, I would rather not inherit, was it five, nonconforming lots as a result of this decision? I would like to preserve the conforming status of lots 200, 300, 400, and 500.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of.
Despite the revisions being made at this time.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense as well.
Right. So Alec, maybe we want to include something like notwithstanding anything in this decision, so the contrary, you know, structures within the park constructed in compliance with the prior OECD permit. And you could do open parentheses, 200, 300, 400, 500, closed parentheses, shall not be deemed nonconforming.
And we will workshop that behind the scenes.
We're moving on to number three. Any comments on that?
So I'll note, this is the condition that will need significant revision to to clarify the declaration of restriction, followed by the increased timeline for conservation restriction.
Some of that language looks a little different than the version I was working off of, but suffice to say, it's going to be looked at.
And the next one is redundant.
Would the board like to strike this one for redundancy?
You need to include lots A and B. Again, I don't know.
We'll just mush them up and Cindy, your point about clarifying the parcels is definitely noted.
Ah, yes, lot 100.
So I know that there was a question about the timing, you know, of assorted actions, lot 100 being one of those things. I think that the Concom and the RecCom had suggested that it would take two years for this to kind of play out at the town level.
Really?
So the the two years is a number that I had, and apologies for jumping in, Madam Chairperson, the two years is an amount of time that I had thrown out to the Conservation Commission and the Recreation Commission as the most reasonable amount of time. I think that work could be done in a shorter timeframe, because that's a lot of volunteers I can task with public engagement exercises. However, I would question whether the applicant would be willing to make the $25,000 payment in advance of the actual conveyance of land, as that would be helpful in us to actually doing the design and visioning of the site.
Russ, are you still with us?
Yeah, I was looking for the hand raise. We would have no objection to that request. Cindy, I would like, I would like to make a comment, you know, the $25,000 sort of seed money to fund some planning exercise be used for that. I think there was a comment raised at the last hearing that it could be used for any purpose that the town felt credible. So I'd like to keep it focused on the land, but at the end, it's really up to the town and up to this board.
Yeah, that was my comment, actually. You know, my preference is to have a language that gives the town flexibility, use that money for other purposes. You know, there's lots of competing projects right now. So I don't want it, and I think we put it up in the findings, so I think we worked on language up higher up in the document on this to say either or. So.
I don't know if I'm on board with that. We're, I mean, this is a gift of land. Well, it's not a gift, like, I guess it's technically a gift. I don't know how it gets conveyed. But the $25,000 is to, is to then build this parcel into into the master plan for this master plan and how it fits into the town. Like, so we're just going to take the land and the money and run? Oh.
Alec, we, sorry, go ahead. My comment about this, because I originally brought this up. I just, it's just $25,000, as generous as it is, it could just go towards something that gets built out there, a few benches, or, you know what I mean? It might not necessarily need to be planning and design processes. It might just be constructing something or cleaning it up, or, you know what I mean? It could be maybe reallocated for actual labor, I guess, not necessarily design, right? If it's.
I'm with you. Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's tied to the grant, the conveyance of the land and the and the active use of either figuring out what to do with the land or implementing something, I'm all for that. I just don't want to turn this into a general fund 25 grand, as much as the town needs the money. Like, this isn't the place to get it, in my opinion.
Well, I'm, I think we worked on language above that gave the town an option, and I think that gives us the most flexibility. This isn't a parcel that was on the open space and recreation plan as an identified parcel, and I'd just like the town to have some flexibility with regard to the funds.
We agree to disagree. I mean, if we don't want the land, then don't take it. I mean, I, you know.
I think, I was going to say, I think the, that gift is tied to the land and or evaluation of, you know, cleaning up of or use of in some way. If you don't, if you don't tie them together, it it gets weird. It looks like it's just, you know, that, that, we need the money for the school, for the fire station, for lots of other things, but I don't think it'd be appropriate if we took, if we used it in a way that wasn't tied to that parcel.
Well, Dan, I'm just suggesting that we leave some flexibility in there, let the town decide how it feels it should best be used. You know, this is a parcel, like I said, it wasn't on a priority list, parcels to obtain. I think there's going to be an ongoing cost for maintenance of it. And, you know, yeah, I'm just suggesting we have some flexibility and give the town some flexibility on it. I think we can pull the language that we had before. It could say for planning and design process or for other purposes, like something, whatever we used above.
Yeah, either way, it should marry with the above comment, right?
Yes, and and I'd say it broader than what you've just put in there, but we can keep, keep going and marry it up.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
Can I get out ahead of this one? I don't know that I've seen it, it might be in the documents, but to Attorney Schneider and Russell Dion, do you have a timeframe in which you intend to deed the parcel to the town of Harvard or to the, sorry, to the Harvard Conservation Trust?
We do not.
Yeah.
You know, we would follow their lead and work on their timeline.
Shouldn't there be some kind of trigger on that one? Shouldn't there be some kind of trigger on that one? It could sit for a long time, you know?
Um, that might be something that uh, I can workshop between the Harvard Conservation Trust and the applicant behind the scenes.
That would, that would be terrific. Again, we didn't want to be presumptuous and suggest a timeline for them. Um, you know, understanding that they have to be ready and willing to to take it.
Yeah, Conservation Trust to run, you know, it's predominantly, if not entirely, uh, volunteers too. So it's not as as simple as just, well, we'll facilitate within sixty days. That might be infeasible for them. So we can have that conversation to work out something that's amenable to both parties.
Terrific. We were happy to do it whenever, but but again, we didn't want to presume what would be acceptable to them.
Yeah, and Alex, if it, if it helps you, um, uh, most, almost all my communication has been with John Lee. And he he um, has usually been the liaison between Campinelli and the Harvard Conservation Trust. And, you know, we've basically made a commitment that once, once we get past an appeal period, we will um, begin to work on on the transfer of this parcel and and agree that pencils it down until we get to that point. But once we get to that point, he seems very excited to get to work on this. And I think it'll be done in a reasonable timeframe.
Good.
Again, lots sixteen and seventeen should include A and B on the wherever you mentioned it, yeah.
Getting light. You're doing great, Alec.
Yeah, and the parking spaces are both captured here as well.
Uh, number eight. So are we up to number eight?
Yes.
Okay, so that last sentence about the plan and rules and regulations for public access have been, shall be filed with and approved. I thought we were going to have, see something sooner than later on that, or is that? We we talked a little bit about what was that supposed to consist of, and because there's going to be public access areas now throughout the park. Um, so I thought it was important to have a schematic or some kind of a plan included as part of this decision.
Well, right now, we have a plan of the designated areas to be put into restriction. The recreational amenities themselves are not necessarily called out. Um, Johanna, was this taken directly from the the previous permits?
Most of it was.
Do, was this specific section on a plan and rules, a plan and rules and regulations for public access? Was that part of the the carryover, or was that your unique language?
I don't recall, but it doesn't look like something I would have drafted myself.
We talked about it was carryover.
Yeah, so my thought is, my my thought is between the the seven clear multi gallon bins that I have uh, upstairs in Town Hall, I'm wondering if we have this on file, um, and I can pull out what the existing language is to give it some context.
Well, I think the issue is, well, you can, but um, because now that's sort of the volleyball and basketball, which I believe are private, now are going to become accessible by the public. So those are the kind of amenities that I thought we want to make sure that we identify so that there's no concern for the public use in the future.
And Cindy, are you saying you're not comfortable with this as a condition, as something that we submit later? You want to see that before this decision is finalized?
I thought that's what we discussed. Um, I guess I'm just not sure what it'll consist of, but, you know, I thought, I thought you were going to present us something. But um, if, you know.
If we said we were, I apologize. I don't, I didn't have it in my notes. I don't think Russ did either. Um, it's something we can work on, but, you know, given where we are in the process, it may make more sense to have it be something that gets submitted after.
Right, um. Well, maybe we could.
Imagine it's probably something that might evolve too over the course of its lifetime. Right, these are rules and regs for public access. I mean, times could, you know, the times could change. There could be a different facility put in. There could, like, I imagine this. I know we have to have a baseline, um, but, I mean, I don't need to see it for a decision. I mean, I'm good with the fact that there should be a plan and rules and regs.
Uh, Madam Chairperson, do you mind if I I cut in again here?
Go ahead, Alex, yeah.
Um, it occurs to me actually that this might have to be a delayed plan, um, only because many of these recreational amenities, not necessarily the volleyball and the the courts themselves, but, for example, the trail networks are within land that's going under a conservation restriction to be approved by a state agency. I don't know that the applicant can commit to certain recreational access until that's been approved by um, by the executive office. That's my only hesitation to to timelining this in advance, where we'd just be setting it up to to have to be amended at a later date time.
Um, you know, that that's fine. Maybe we just add, you know, basketball and volleyball or something. I just wanted to identify that those are also amenities that the public will have access to. Um, if listed hiking, jogging, and cross-country skiing, so maybe add a couple more things just to.
And I think those are totally fair game right now, because those amenities are on land that's not going under a CR. So I think those are absolutely something we can moralize here.
Now, here comes the number uh, ten. Um, I was going to ask the applicant whether there's um, potential to upgrade. This came from a resident um, privately to me about upgrading the basketball court to include a fence on the side that abuts the uh, uh, the 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 trees and the shrubs, because I guess the balls tend to run down, run down there. So I'm just curious whether the applicant would consider upgrading the basketball court to include a fence and I don't know if any, I don't know what condition it's in.
They can certainly take a look at it. I really, you know, we we do a good job out there. Um, and to Richard's point, um, this thing's going to evolve and this is going to change. Um, you know, we um, we've been asking our property managers to talk to the people that actually use the park. The people that use the park are very consistent. Um, people who walk, people who jog, people who walk their dogs, people who use the basketball courts. It, they're not one offs. They're there quite often. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if our property managers have talked to them. Um, so, you know, somewhere down the road, it might not be a basketball court. It might be coming into the town and putting a pickleball court in or something. I don't know. I'm not suggesting that. I just, I just want to do the right thing that people desire, so we're trying to take a survey. But um, but the bottom line here is, um, yeah, we can look at that. I, I thought there's three fences around those areas, so maybe the ball bounces over the fence, but we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, so that that is the kind of thing, the pickleball idea, um, sort of walks across my path. Um, and if we don't put it in something like this, I guess, how would we ever? You know, this, I know this is the master plan, not building specific, but um, is there an opportunity to weigh in on some of those other amenities? In the future, if not as part of this decision?
No, we're not proposing any new amenities as part of this decision.
Okay, so if a pickleball court were to come, it would be part of a site plan down the road, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I should probably strike that term.
Well, it was of interest. I would have brought it up anyway, but.
It's just, it's just getting late and, you know, we we want to be good people. I think we are good people. Um, we're going to take a look at this fence, um, and and we'll, and we'll, we'll correct it if there's, if there's a deficient, deficient, can't even get there. If there's a deficient fence that that has come on unwired, we'll fix it. You know, we we've gone through that park and fixed fences and and posted rails to make the scenic vistas. You know, we keep that, that fence up uh, every year, um, that that wooden post fence. So we'll check, we'll check out this basketball fence per your request. I don't think it needs to be part of this decision. I think it's unnecessary.
Um, on number twelve about the uh, the traffic, I was going to add a um, something about, you know, if if the planning board be made, is made aware of the need for additional traffic calming measures as a result of traffic in or coming to the park, the applicant um, shall work with the town to identify and uh, be responsible for the cost and implementation of any identified additional traffic common, calming measures in the area. That's a long.
Yeah, I think we had discussed that at a prior meeting. We strenuously object to an open-ended condition that requires open-ended financial mitigation, do you know, that may come to the board's attention. And perhaps Adam can weigh in on all the reasons why a condition like that doesn't really work.
Like me to do that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, thank you.
Um, so uh, I I feel as if maybe we've had this discussion before in the context of of other projects, me and and the board. Um, because this is an issue that arises with some frequency, not just in Boxborough, but um, before other planning boards, zoning boards. Um, when you're reviewing a project and you have uh, potential concerns about um, future mitigation that may be required. And, you know, the difficult advice I've got to give as your counsel is, this is your bite of the apple. Now, I suppose the good news is with a project of this sort, that this is a master special permit and that you're going to have other bites of the apple when the individual projects that are subsumed within this master special permit come before you for site plan review. Of course, I recognize that that will be a site plan review, not individual additional special permits. And so those review, reviews will be of a less discretionary nature than a special permit. But the law is very clear that you don't have the authority as a board to sort of defer to uh, a future determination of your board, or worse, not to a determination, simply to uh, circumstances in that in your mind in the future, or in the mind of your successors, would warrant further mitigation, requiring that mitigation at a later day. You you simply can't do that. You've got to provide either um, the the mitigation that is required now as a component, as a condition of approval, um, or you have to to provide defined parameters. And we've done that before, and this is what I think we did in the context of one other project where um, there were concerns, and again, I'll I'll type, top and talk in hypotheticals, let's, let's discuss traffic. If you have specific concerns that um, traffic today may not justify um, a certain type of uh, traffic mitigation measure, like a, like a, a, a speed hump or a stop sign uh, internal to a site. Um, but if the traffic volumes reach a certain uh, level beyond what they're anticipated to to reach, but a level that the board is concerned they may reach, you could provide objective defined criteria within a decision that says, should the 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 traffic volume, should the traffic count exceed X or Y or Z, then the applicant shall uh, install the additional traffic mitigation measures, and then you could specify what those are. So you can be specific if you have criteria upon which you can, you can base a a condition that is going to be structured in that manner. Um, what you can't do is you can't provide the sort of open-ended condition that I think is being suggested here that says, well, if it turns out, turns out that the traffic coming, that 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 the traffic is worse than we think it's going to be, or the traffic calming measures that are being installed don't quite work the way that they should work, well, then the applicant has to come back in the future. We get to decide at that point what additional mitigation the applicant has to do. It 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 it's, it's too open-ended, and the courts have repeatedly said that that doesn't, that doesn't work. Um, so either either more defined criteria or do the requisite homework now to determine what the mitigation needs to be. But again, this may be that outlier of a case, unlike most that come before you, where you are going to get a further bite at the apple during the site plan reviews of the individual projects.
Okay, um, I guess that's, that's an end to that. I I think the Swanson Road residents, they're going to get the uh, speed radar indicators correct, um, but the speed bumps are going to be on Beaverbrook Road. Is that, that's being proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we just have no way of measuring it, and it's going to be subjective, and we're going to be in probably not a great position to be able to require anymore, but we're just assuming the mitigation will be successful based on, I guess, your, your traffic studies, so.
Well, I, I think what you just uh, alluded to is that if, you know, two buildings go up, traffic has gone way up more than we anticipate. When site plan review comes up for the the next building, that could be built in as a condition of that site plans, like further traffic calming measures on the road. So we would have potentially the opportunity to address that in the future if it's needed.
I I did ask Russ, I think, last time to confirm that the numbers in the traffic report um, were in excess of twelve thousand daily trips. Were you able to confirm that?
Yeah, um, yeah, I did. I can comment on it in just one split second. Um, I just want to comment on um, we, what Chris just said and what you were saying prior. We have a baseline, um, earlier in this hearing process. As in action, we went out and we put down um, traffic counters at the corner of one eleven and Swanson Road. So we, we looked at every single vehicle that entered Swanson Road. Then we put them in our park, then we put them at the end of our park. So we know the percentage of traffic that goes down Swanson Road. There are several other very, very active commercial buildings there. Uh, lots of labs that people don't work remotely. Those parking lots are full. And that is a very heavily populated area of apartments. And we determined that about, I I think it was about twenty seven or twenty eight percent of the traffic that actually enters Swanson Road actually makes it to the park today. So we have a baseline, just this Chris was just describing. As we go forward with site plan approval, we can use that baseline from two thousand twenty five and look at what's happening with any additional population of the park. So I think we're in a good position to, to talk about that when the time's right. But right now, seventy five percent or greater of the traffic on that road has nothing to do with the occupants of the park. However, we want to be a good citizen. Um, so answering your question, Cindy, um, the, there's a lot of data there, but I'm going to try to keep it super quick, especially for Rebecca, because I can see she's getting tired, and I do respect that. Um, the original Cisco um, average daily trips was ten thousand, roughly ten thousand one hundred trips. And it was heavily based on an office population with a complementary of R and D. And it was also based on pre-two thousand I T E standards. Bob Michaud in MDM Transportation did an update in two thousand and twenty-three during the MIPA process. And our park was more of an R and D park with a split for office, but it's really an R and D park with office supporting components. And it was using two thousand twenty-three I T E data, which has increased since pre-two thousand. So it's really the historic data going from an earlier permit to uh, a traffic impact study twenty-four years later using updated data from the I T E standard. So that, that's really the mathematical difference. And what it amounts to for the rest of the board members is the average trips were planned for the Cisco development at slightly over ten thousand trips at maximum buildout, at maximum occupancy. And this park at maximum buildout and maximum occupancy on today's standards is at twelve thousand seven hundred or so, eight hundred trips, which makes for about two thousand and two hundred, I forget the exact numbers, increase. So the increase is based on the difference. and 200, I forget the exact numbers, increase. So the increase is based on the difference of data from pre-2000 to 2023. I hope, I hope that was reasonably clear there.
Yeah. So I guess, um, just going back to the, um, the condition number, or are we still at number 12? There was some talk about, or talk about if, if it exceeded a, a specific amount. I mean, we could reference your recent study about 75% of the traffic going on Swanson Road and 25% in the park. I mean, we could reference if that 25% exceeds some threshold, then you know, it would be worth relooking at, at the traffic measures. That, that's all I was trying to get at. You know, if for some reason the mitigation isn't doing, you know, the, and what it's intended, it would be nice to be able to reach back and say, you know, the assumptions were X, but it's turning out to be Y. So we'd like to make, you know, remedy that. That's all I'm trying to get at.
Right. But traffic calming in the form of speed bumps and radar indicators is not necessarily tied to the volume of, of vehicular traffic. It's really this, those are intending to mitigate speed.
But did those measures come out of that same assessment?
No, no. Those measures came out of comments from the board that you wanted us to slow cars down.
Yeah, it's the signaling and the intersections that are addressing like the volume, right?
And I think as Attorney Costa noted to, it's like if, if you're going to predict something, you have to be specific about it. So it would be a, if trips past 12, the 12,000, uh, daily trips, then X would happen. We can't just say it would then be looked at again. I think we have to have the specific conditions in place. And we really know what those would be right now. So.
All right. Well, I, I'll think about it a little bit. Um, but I, I do think we have some metrics that we could use and just not sure how to apply them. So we can, we can move on.
And 15 has, should be adjusted to map to whatever we agreed to. It's probably misplaced now, but.
No, this condition still stands on its own, on its own, just that they can't file a, um, file for a building permit until it's recorded.
Um, the further. I see it. I'm sorry. Yep.
The typical language we append to the bottom of the document will have to be, um, will have to be slightly modified based on the discussions previously, but we'll, um, we'll present that specifically redlined so you can see the difference.
Um, item 12, sorry, you just jumped ahead where those bullets are. So those came out of the meat, those should really replicate the section 61 findings, I think verbatim. Um, and I think there's one about the transportation management program that, or transportation monitoring po, program that was left out for a beginning of five years. Um, so that should be included. Um, and there was, uh, I, I did have this note in the decision 0101, section 3.13C required three years after completion to monitor traffic entering and exiting the development at Swanson Road annually. If the number exceeded 1,700 trips during the peak hour on a regular basis, the applicant shall conduct a level of service analysis at Route 111 intersection with Swanson Road and 495 north and southbound ramps. So I don't know if that condition will still hold. If that was a prior condition.
That was a prior previous decision?
Yes, in 0101, uh, condition 313C.
I would suggest that that probably has been superseded by Mepus section 61 findings, but which are much more recent.
Well, it's an example of a condition that indicates if the trip, number of trips exceed a certain amount, then you know, you gotta do another level of service analysis. So again, um, it's not unheard of to put a condition like that in.
Well, we, why don't we, why don't we add, I mean, like, we, we already know what the level of service is here, right? What was the number? Sorry, it's getting late. It was, uh.
Can I suggest that we have this hashed out offline? Um, and we look at it in the next draft. I mean, if that was a condition of the previous decision, and I guess to your point, Cindy, why can't we include that in some form in this one? Um, maybe they can hash out something similar to that that's relevant to this.
Yeah, Alec, why don't you just make a note in the document? It's, uh, decision 0101, condition 3.13C.
Uh, can you repeat that condition, what?
Uh, 3.13C.
Okay. Any comments on 14 and 15?
So there's the reference to site plan approval that I had way up above. No. So I have a list of other conditions which I'll whittle down and send to Alec, I guess. I think he already got it in my first draft, but I'll send it again.
Yeah, I'd like to get um, everything in writing to them, you know, ASAP so that, um, we can have a productive next round of this. Um, and I'm hoping that we can have this document edited per all these comments, um, now that we've worked through it for that discussion as well, just so it's productive.
So would now be a good time to go back and just kind of confirm, I guess, what the sticking points are. Cause we know one is the, the timing. So 15 years or 17 and a half years. I think there were a couple of other things that were highlighted in yellow. I just, um, I want to clarify. Yeah. What are the things that we need to make decisions on?
I thought it was.
11:20 at night, so I'm not sure, feeling like making any major decisions right now.
Well, not, not making them, but just flagging like this is a, this is a thing that needs debate.
Hmm. So its timelines seem to be a big sticker and
Yeah.
We, we plan on this inclusion, inclusion or not. I mean, again, I, I think maybe some of these things can be worked out offline, like.
Yeah, they might become moot as the stuff gets tiled together.
I mean, there's definitely the timeline thing we're going to have to talk about.
There was the buffer, there was the buffer in the building height. Did that get addressed and what?
Yes.
Okay.
That was addressed. So it was really, I think it came down to, I think it was really the timeline was, I mean, I, there could be, I mean, that's what I had captured out of the fourth thing.
Yeah, that's all I had written down. I just wanted to know if I had missed, forgotten about something.
Okay. So I'm going to, um, suggest that we, um, let our attorneys go back and start, um, noodling over this thing a little bit more for us to have another discussion about. But I'm, I thank the board for sitting through this um, so late tonight to, to try to get it, um, wrapped up for the evening. Um, Cindy or any other board members that have extra comments, uh, please share those with, um, with Alec to share with the applicant as well. Um, in the interim, so. Um, Alec, we need to likely make a motion to continue?
Uh, yes.
January 5th, is it?
Um, you still have a December 15th meeting available if the board wishes to act on it. Um,
You took that off the, you took that off last meeting.
We did.
Yes. Because it was supposed to be used for the town meeting?
Well, that's still the discretion of the board. If the board wants to strike that meeting, that's, um, that's within your purview.
Right. You struck it though already. So I, I'm not available on that date. So I would say we're talking about January 5th.
Okay, um.
Is the intent on January, I mean, so we're going to get a clean copy and hopefully well ahead of that, we go through it. I mean, I, I'd like to, is the intent that we're going to be positioned to kind of clean that up and be in a position to vote on this thing on January 5th?
I hope so.
I won't be here for January.
Lovely as it is to, to hang out with, um, with, uh, the Ken Finelli team and, and Attorney Schneider, hopefully we can get a decision made.
Well, Mark, you should.
What I said.
You're not here for that date, Mark. Okay.
Not be here for the 5th, no.
Are you gone that whole week or?
I am. I'm gone that whole week.
Okay. Do we want to nudge the 5th to the 12th or? I don't know. What else do we have?
Are we the 5th and the 19th?
Uh, the 5th and the 21st. The 19th is a holiday, but the 21st was a question mark for some. There was at least one board member on my notes that was not going to be, or might not be available that week.
I can make the 12th work.
Me too.
So bumping the 5th to the 12th?
Um, Attorney Costa and Attorney Schneider and, uh, Russell, are you all available on the 12th of January?
Alec, do we have anything else booked for the January 5th?
Um, tentatively, yes, we have something else booked that might be, um, might be moving. Um, I'm sure yet. I still need to communicate with the other applicant.
I just want to avoid back-to-back meetings. So we either bump both applicants out to the, the 12th, or we look for the 21st, right?
And correct me if I'm wrong through you, Madam Chair. Alec, wasn't 984 Mass Ave continued to January 5th?
It, it was, yes. Um, it's unclear as of yet, but, uh, rumblings are that there might be a continuation of that further.
I'm available on the 12th if, uh, if the applicant and the applicant's counsel are available.
I have no objection to the 12th. I'm just reminding the board that the 19th is, um, a holiday.
Yes.
I'm also available on the 12th. Um, and I just wanted to confirm, I thought when I had looked at this previously, but the 15th was still being carried as a, I'm sorry, December 15th was still being carried as a meeting date of the board? Is that, that's just not the case anymore?
It was, um, dropped last, last meeting.
Okay, okay.
And its purpose was for our town meeting, which got postponed.
I see.
So Alec, are you, you're going to figure out about, uh, whether the 5th can move to the 12th?
Um, yes, I, if, if the 5th was to move, it would probably be to a later date. So potentially that 21st meeting, if not a February meeting.
Okay.
Um, so I just, unfortunately I can't tell you for certain to now, tonight, that it's going to be extended. Um, only because I need to communicate further with the applicant and get it in writing.
Okay. But what I'm trying not to do is, is add another meeting here. So I guess, can it be moved?
The 5th?
Yes, it needs to be, yeah.
I, I, I can't commit on behalf of the applicant. I, I just, I can't confirm that. What I can control, um, what we can control is your meeting of the 21st. We could go ahead and cancel that. So it would make your, your 5th and your 12th meeting back-to-back, but then that would be it for the month of January.
We said that December 22nd, 22nd was out, right?
Uh, at the time of originally drafting your schedule, yes, that was out. I can't speak to it now.
I can, I'm okay with the 27th.
I am not okay with the, I will be on vacation.
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Let's take that off.
Alec, the likelihood of the 5th moving?
Um, my apologies, Madam Chairperson. I, I, given the sensitivity around that application, I cannot commit to anything.
Yeah, yeah, I understood. All right. I heard, um, three members say the 12th is okay. I, I believe. Cindy did.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, let's, um, let, I'd entertain a motion to, um, continue this hearing, uh, until January 12th.
So moved.
At, at 7:05?
amended.
Okay.
Seconded.
Moved by, uh, Mark White and seconded by Cindy Markowitz. Um, any discussion?
Okay, hearing none. Uh, roll call. Oz, I see Cindy Markowitz.
Uh, Markowitz, aye.
Um, Mark White.
But I.
Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzardi, aye.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Or I. Um, okay. Well, thank you very much, um, Johanna and, and Russ for joining us tonight. Thank you everybody for sitting through that.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Adam. Have a good rush for your evening.
Okay, um, let's move through this quickly if we can. Um, administrative business, uh, we do not have any minutes, uh, in the packet, so we're not reviewing those tonight. Um, received correspondence, anything to go through specifically on that, Alec, or cruise through it? Okay, planners report?
Um, I will, rather than give anything robust, I'll just ask the question, would the board like to cancel their January 21st meeting in light of the, the most recently scheduled meeting the week before? At this time, you have nothing on your agenda for the 21st. So if we're going to cancel it, now's a good time to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem canceling. I think one of the challenges we have is one of these lingering things that continues to stay on the agenda is few upcoming article, upcoming town meetings and articles. And we haven't had any conversation about upcoming town meetings and articles.
And, and the associate member? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, or associate member. So like, as much as I don't want to have three meetings in January, like, you know, I, I just don't know. Like today, we can say we don't have any applications, but like, we probably have town meeting prep work, right? Maybe starting, I don't know. I don't know. Do we need to decide that tonight?
No, I'm just extending the olive branch because I just made you book an extra meeting.
It's fine. We might end up canceling the 5th if, uh.
Can we put the 24?
Yeah.
Well, keep the 21st in case you cancel the 5th.
Right. Keep it as a possible, but not a, a solid date. Like we won't book something if we can push it to the following meeting.
Makes sense. Um, otherwise I just have a brief enclave update, um, I want to share. And then, uh, there was a CPC application that we wanted to briefly talk through for, um, a letter of support, but, um, the enclave update. So as discussed, um, their entirety of the applicant's tolling period expired in the month of November. Don't have that date off the top of my head, sitting here at this hour. Um, but, um, as I had previously discussed, myself and the town administrator have met with the homeowners association who has done their own exploratory work. Um, I reached out to them earlier today. Um, and they had asked for a little bit of extra time to provide me with that, uh, that full list of potential errors and omissions. Uh, Sue is already aware of her own list, but, um, they have asked to, to provide that likely right at the start of the new year. Um, so once we receive that from them, um, we will package it all up. Sue is going to spend some time with us reviewing it, um, consolidating those lists to make sure we have ev, a complete list of anything that's outstanding, including a site visit that Sue will conduct to, to put eyes on things and evaluate the current condition. And we will present that to you, um, at the, at the January meeting. A January meeting to be decided based on when I get their list.
Alex. Um, okay, um, committee reports, uh, CPC?
Uh, so meeting Thursday to, to go through a bunch of the applications. Um, Alec, is there something you wanted from, for us for that, for the, for which? from for us for that, for the for which?
Yes, yes, uh, not the roof, no, um, uh, and under general business, uh, we will have the item opportunity to pick it up. But specifically Ian is seeking a letter of support on the conservation commission's request for a twenty five thousand dollar contribution greater than the typical ten thousand dollar contribution conservation trust.
That feels very likely to happen, so.
Um, DRB, we have not met, um, EDC?
We met, uh, recap on Village for a Day, was a good turnout, two hundred people participated. Feedback from the businesses was reasonably posi- was positive. Some of the businesses did really well. Um. The business breakfast is scheduled for, I think, the third Monday, Tuesday in January, so sort of middle of January. Um, I may not have the date exactly right. And um, yeah, they did, we did the grand opener. Uh, Divya did her grand opening of Thinking Flower and um, we had Senator Eldridge there and our representative Senna and the select board member and Cut Ribbon and the whole thing. She's got a great spot on uh, on Mass Ave right next to the bank, so. That is it, I think, for now. Oh, we got the grant, we won the grant on uh, doing the economic development plan, so. That'll kick off soon.
Can I ask a question about the economic development plan? Uh, well, like, is the planning board gonna have any input into that? Um, and you know, formally or informally?
Yeah, I think Alex going through the routine of helping put together the, or Ian, put together the full kind of, you know, outreach and input from other committees and boards, so I think, I think the loose answer to that is yes. But I don't know that there's a, there, we don't have the specific plan laid out yet, Cindy, but um, it will be laid out.
Sure.
It's a, it's a key action under the master plan, um, and it feeds like four other actions, so.
Okay, um, Magic?
I wasn't able to make that meeting.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, Water Resources?
Yeah, so uh, the consultant from Weston and Sampson presented the results of the phase one uh, comprehensive water management report, I think is the title. Um, I think there would be value in having the Water Resources Committee come to a planning board meeting and and they'll have a discussion about what sort of some of the findings in that report and what else the planning board might like the Water Resources Committee to be focusing on. You know, they got some recommendations out of that, but we may have slightly different items. But I I think it would be useful to hear the presentation, at least in some form. So I know our schedules have been pretty busy, but you know, if uh, if there's possibility to reach out, um, you know, I would try, I can help coordinate having one or more members of the Water Resources come and and speak to us about the findings in the report. Cause I, I think there's some important things there, and we did have sort of an initial say and yet kind of getting that going. So I think it'd be a good time to circle back with them.
Cindy, um, and the BLF is uh, scheduled to meet on Wednesday of this week. Um. Okay, moving on, general business, um, I think we already got A and R. I think this might be carryover, Alec.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, CPC two thousand twenty seven applications.
Uh, yeah, so uh, as Alec had said, uh, this year the Conscom has decided to apply for twenty five thousand dollars worth of CPA funds, which is an increase from their usual ten thousand dollars. Uh, their ten thousand dollar application, they've been awarded for the past eight years or so. Um, this came in response primarily to a Massachusetts Land Trust Coalition Partner Meeting. Alec and I went to this past September. Um, they identified a slew of upcoming opportunities for increased conservation efforts. Um, among a couple other really important reasons that we'll be outlining at our um, at our public hearing on Thursday, one of which is um, our upcoming uh, open space and recreation plan update. Um, our current open space recreation plan was drafted in twenty twenty three and goes until twenty twenty seven, or sorry, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. Um, however, this next one will will be able to uh, have a ten year timeline attached to it. Um, so yeah, our temporary increase contribution to the trust fund, um, it will allow us to pursue goals in the OS RP more readily, um, as well as poised the the commission to respond more quickly to um, things like land acquisitions. Um, so yeah, we we'd like to ask the planning board, uh, would consider some uh, writing a a letter of support for the Conscom CPA application, um, especially in the interest of the need for updating our uh, open space and recreation plan in the very near future.
Comments from the board?
I assume there's gonna be a bunch of other CPC applications as well, which I guess I'd rather know what sort of all the all the requests coming in are before we, you know, I mean, I'm supportive of probably all of them, but I would like to understand what they are.
Uh, yeah, there's a bunch. Um, uh, nothing exceeding the budget um, at the moment. Uh, the only one that might be the slightest bit controversial is um, for Flara, um, the playground there, and the discussion is basically, cause it's a significant chunk, I think it's three hundred thousand. It's more about the, do we do this now or do we wait a cycle? Um, so the three main play- playgrounds in town aren't all back to back to back. So in our many years when they need replacement, we don't have that that again. Um, outside of that, I think the next biggest line item is actually the the roof of the town hall. Um, and then everything else in order of magnitude smaller. So twenty five, ten, fifteen, that kind of thing.
What, and what's the overall budget for CPC usually or?
Uh, so it's, it's, the math is honestly hard to track. Um. It essentially dumps into a fund periodically, and it's with uh, three given buckets and just withdrawn as projects come up. So that's why there's so mu- there's a a lot sitting in the kind uh, open space recreation portion of that. That's why so much is being considered for the Flara, Flara's playground, because that bucket is is relatively large.
So the money's already, I'm sorry, I don't wanna belabor this. Money's already there, but there are several requests totaling amount of X.
Yeah, totaling the amount of, uh, seven hundred K, I think. This is an older one that I have nearby.
Right, so there's quite a lot of money being requested for CPC, and so um, I I guess I hold off on re- making a recommendation to the Conscom support, to support the Conscom till we have a better idea what all the other funding mechanisms are or funding requests.
It it seems extremely likely to pass um, that the request, so I, we can have a letter of support. I I think it'll, I think it'll go without it.
The only reason we asked is because uh, obviously it's a new ask for us going up um, two hundred and fifty percent, really. And uh, this is, we set a temporary increase, we're not trying to pigeonhole ourselves to a one or two years. So we didn't directly identify exactly how many years it is. And um, because we did ask for such a uh, an increase as such, it definitely has uh, raised some questions that we're, we're hoping to um, to uh, to pro- provide a strong argument in our, in our uh, presentation come Thursday. Um, so that's, that's why we would ask.
Yeah, no, that was basically the main question of like, why did it jump? And as long as there's a, you know, a reasonable, reasonable sounding, you know, story, I I I think it'll pass probably unanimously, like most of the things will.
Would it be possible to provide the planning board with some kind of documentation in and around what the asks are here exactly? So that we can just give this some proper thought and when do you need an answer by, I guess?
So my apologies, Madam Chairperson, we'd included all this in your um, in your last packet, in full, all the applications. Um, but then because of the lateness of the hour, we just didn't get to the item. Um, unfortunately, the public hearing for the CPC applications, as Chris said, is this Thursday. Um, so the deadline to do a letter of support is really um, is really Wednesday.
Okay, why, how come we came, brought it to the wire like this? Feels like some notice would have been a little helpful for us to make this, make this decision. Um, did board members have any other thoughts or comments about this?
I think that's what Alec just said. It was, it was in a previous packet, but we've been busy enough, we didn't get there.
Sounds like they don't need our weigh in so much as, I mean, they they've got their votes to to put it before the town. I think the town's gonna ask a lot of questions, especially once they find out what the total dollar amount of the budget's gonna be this year.
Yeah, that could be. That could be the bigger question.
It's a higher hurdle than than what do we think about it? Uh, I don't really remember being asked too many times what we thought about.
I I do just wanna make one note there, Mark, only because of the the comment just there. As a reminder, CPC funds are set aside and separate from your general fund. And so this money is being taxed regardless of how it's being spent. This is a contribution from the CPC fund, not from the general fund. So this is irregardless of of any override votes or other measures.
So it's not gonna be further raised then?
Nope.
I think in past, in past years, we have um, provided a recommendation on the whole CPC program. So I would expect that we would do the same, and I believe, you know, I remember when Robin was the liaison, um, you know, we had a list. We, and we made a recommendation for town meeting, so I guess my, that would be my preference when we have the whole picture in front of us. Again, I'm not, I wanna be supportive of Conscom, but you know, there's a lot of competing interests, so I'd like to see the whole package before.
Are you saying, Alec, that it was in a prior packet?
Uh, yes, uh, this was on your agenda for a couple of weeks ago.
Which, ten thirty?
I would say no, that was not your last meeting.
Okay.
No, it was one of the more recent ones, but. Um, Madam Chair, do you wanna just table this, or do you want me to give you a a motion and and we can just let it fall where it does?
It sounds like it's likely gonna go forward anyways, um, Alec, from what I'm gleaning from this conversation. Um. I mean, if the board is okay with just kind of passing over the letter of support, I guess, I mean, we are supportive every year when we see these things coming through, but um, I agree with Cindy, we usually do it in a different way than writing a letter. Um, does the board agree with that or?
Yeah, w- w- we will see all all the articles once they're, once they're actually at the stage to be articles.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we'll be able to have another opportunity at that point, I think. Um, is my feeling. Does the board agree or disagree?
Yeah, I I I'm not inclined to jump into the middle of it right now. I mean, we, without going through the packet and seeing everything, it sounds like the CPC is on a path. Um, but I agree, I think, you know, we should, we should be including that in our in our pack, well, it wasn't our packet, like I, this, this year, I think this period is.
Till midnight.
I I can't find it in the packet. Eleven seventeen? Was it the eleven seventeen meeting?
I I don't know off the top of my head. We've had these for for about a month or so now, so it would have been one of your last three, but um.
We can dig it on our own time.
It doesn't make any difference at this point, because, so I I'm all for just letting it go this time.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Um, okay, so I guess we're at that time of the night, folks are ready to tuck in.
They can make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Mark. Any uh, buddy want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Mark White, seconded by Rich Gazardi, uh, discussion? Okay, uh, as I see you, Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, I.
Mark White.
White, I.
Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi, I.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, I.
All right, thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Night.
Have a good night.
Night, guys.
Good night.